Evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Planning Board for September 19th, 2019. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Planning Board is going to be going into executive session to discuss pending litigation, but before we do that, we have some continuances that we'd like to run through in case there's anyone in the audience that is here for one of those matters that is not going to be discussed tonight.
Chair, I'd like to take items 8E, 8F, and 8G out of order together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero. Okay. Item 8E is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.1.1, alteration of nonconforming use of the zoning bylaws, 118 Cambridge Street, Henley Enterprises Incorporated is the applicant. Item 8F is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.2.2, nonconforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaw, 118 Cambridge Street, Henley Enterprises is the applicant. And item 8G is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 118 Cambridge Street, Henley Enterprises Incorporated is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of October 3rd, 2019, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated September 10th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Thank you for joining us, Ernie.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 8H and H8I out of order and together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Item 8H is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.6, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of the zoning bylaws, 376 Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant. And item 8I is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 376 Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of October 3rd, 2019, as requested by the applicant in an email dated September 16th, 2019.
Do we have a discussion on that one? So this has been continued for many months. Is there an explanation of why?
There is.
So the applicant has asked for continuance after the last meeting. They noted the concern about the fabrication especially at this location. From what we understand, they are looking for alternative locations elsewhere in surrounding towns around us. So they're just looking to try to figure out that, what they might keep here. What we had told them is that we will recommend to continue to the next meeting, but if they continue past that, that we'll want to have some sort of condition for continuance. That they have remedied a lot of already, what has already been a nuisance to the neighbors with the cleaning outside and the closing the door, but we just wanted to put that in writing for the further continuances. So if they continue again, you'll see kind of a list of items that we want to agree through that time period.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Has it been seconded?
Chair, I wish them well. I wondered why they didn't do that previously, so let's hope they find a place.
I believe it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It'll say six zero. All right. And now the Planning Board is going to enter executive session. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing a strategy with respect to pending litigation, Herb Chambers, Cambridge Street LLC versus the Planning Board for the town of Burlington, Land Court Case Number 19 miscellaneous 000268, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Planning Board, and the chair so declares, and to reconvene in regular session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npumba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Casbello?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Well, we will be in the next room, and we will reconvene shortly. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I'm sorry you had to wait. We are back, and the next item on our agenda is citizens' time. If there's anyone who would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please come forward at this time, and I see two. Please come forward. And please use the microphones and state your names for the record. Hold them nice and close, they don't work very well unless you do that. Hi.
Shall I stand up?
Nope.
You can stay seated, wherever you're comfortable.
My name is Suzanne Russell. I live at 26 Cormier Road in Burlington with my husband Neil. And tonight, we have several neighbors and abutting residents who live in the Cormier Road area, several of whom are in the audience. And we also have a couple town reps from Precinct 7, who were planning on coming tonight. I don't think they've arrived yet, but hopefully they will arrive.
So this is in regard, obviously, to the 108 Mueller proposed subdivision. I believe the board got a letter from our lawyer representing our position on the issue. We basically believe that we were never given proper notice of a material change in plan that came from originally the Mueller side across an existing driveway. At some point in February, March, April timeframe, the plan changed to build on a different site on the property and to use a proposed right-of-way that we don't believe exists. And neither us or any of the abutters were notified that that material change in plan occurred. We believe this invalidates that decision, however, if it's even a conditional one, that it requires revisiting this entire subdivision plan going forward. So that's the short story from our standpoint. Again, the neighbors are here if there's questions about this. I did bring a couple of other items that go along with this property. I thought that possibly this is an appropriate time to at least mention that the notes from the Board of Engineering on this project states that all the sewer and so on, it's probably standard language, has to be approved and be in the condition that was stated. We know for a fact that's not true. We have a note from the Town Board of Engineering that was created when our lot was improved, showing the correct location of the sewer, and the lack of several other things that were supposed to be there, that were on the drawing that the 108 project is using. So just as a minor point, you know, beyond the point that we don't think the decision was handled properly with the process, we will do what we need to. We're trying to learn the process, but we want to put it before the board that that decision needs to be reopened, or just deny the thing going forward. So that was our five minutes of citizen time.
Thank you. May I ask a question, and I'm not sure who I should be directing the question to, regarding the right-of-way and whether or not it exists? You suggested that it does not actually exist?
It's what I would phrase a paper right-of-way. The property, this lot, was divided twice, first in 2004 to create the 108 property. There is no such right-of-way on any of that. And two years later, in '06, the property was further subdivided to create 30 Cormier from 26. There's a proposed 40-foot on that drawing. That's the first occurrence that that shows anywhere. So as our lawyer's letter states, there's no way, with no supporting documentation, that right-of-way exists for the benefit of 108 Mueller. There's no deed, no title, no other statement that that right-of-way even exists, except on that site plan from 2006.
And on the site plan from 2006, again, which property was that right-of-way attached to?
Ours and 26 and 30 Cormier. It basically looks like an attempt to expand the existing 15 or 20-foot right-of-way wider.
Just between those two properties?
Just to the lot line for 108. So it comes from Cormier Road over the existing 15 or 20-foot and ends at the 108 Mueller line on that drawing. So we brought a copy of that drawing from the Engineering Department, but that's the first time that that appears, and according to our lawyer and our deeds and so on search, there's no backing documentation other than that single piece of paper. And that seems to have been perpetuated onto the 108 Mueller subdivision plan somehow.
Okay. Thank you. Kristen, can you please, can you clarify any of this for us?
A little bit. We just received the hard copy of the letter today, so from their attorney, so I can't say that I've fully digested it and understood the claim.
So we haven't seen that yet, just so you know.
But I did meet with these folks on Tuesday in preparation for this meeting. So 108 Mueller Road, the Planning Board has approved the subdivision coming in from Cormier. We did have all the easement documentation and the plans. It is all recorded at the registry. If there is a defect for which we are unaware of, that would change the information that was provided during the process, then we certainly need to know that, because we make decisions on information that we believe is, you know, true. If it's filed, we have no reason to doubt it's not a right-of-way. If there's some defect that they come across that we should be aware of, then that might change the situation. But we have approved it. It is still open with the Board of Health. They're looking for some drainage calculations. So therefore, we have continued to file a Form S, which is a motion to continue the time period to file the decision. So we have not yet filed the decision for this. We have till October 1st under the last Form S. Actually, that reminds me, you have to make that motion. But anyway, we haven't filed the decision. If there's, so what I've stated to the folks on Cormier Road, we would very much be interested in if there's information they have, their lawyer says, based upon the plan, the petitioner locates 40-foot right-of-way in utilities, and over which there is a planned driveway for access in the proposed subdivision Cormier Road. No such 40-foot right-of-way exists, so, you know, we certainly would like to see whatever information they have to figure that out. In the meantime, during the hearing, we had, through this board and through staff, we had recommended and directed the applicants that were in front of us to work with their neighbors on Cormier Road. You know, I'm sorry, it sounds like that there wasn't as much outreach as what we had hoped through their neighbors, but, you know, I have talked to Tom Murphy, their lawyer, their attorney, to try to figure out if there's a way for them to work out their interests, their differences, to try to make this work between the properties. So at this point, we will certainly take a look at the letter. We'll take a look at what we have on file, and if there's any additional information that they can provide us. I would advise you to, if you have interest to go to the Board of Health...
It's interesting that you phrased it in that way, because it's the lack of information that we're presenting to you. There is no deed or title that says who owns that right-of-way. There's a drawing that subdivides 26 from 30. In principle, our lawyer's opinion is that that could only exist for the benefit of 26 and 30 without any other documentation. So in addition, I mean, if that's not sufficient to invalidate the decision, we were never notified that the board was considering or approving a driveway to Cormier Road through our property, and we'll appeal that at appropriate time. I don't, you know, in terms of how the process works, when we can appeal it. We will appeal it on that basis if it doesn't get denied on this basis, so.
So with knowing that, we did go through the option that certainly, that once we file, you may appeal the subdivision decision of this board. Obviously, in all aspects, we try to avoid any litigation, so we, again, we've reached out to the applicant's attorney to try to help remedy this. No one likes to be in litigation. We will reach out if it comes to that point with our own town council to figure out if there's information or advice they can give us to avoid such litigation as well. But at this point, you know, we'll take a look at what you've submitted, and we'll let you know when. You will get notice of our decision once it has been made.
Okay. I did bring copies of the engineering diagram with the sewer line on it. If people are interested in that, I can leave them here. We don't want to necessarily tie up the rest of the meeting with this, but...
I think you can certainly give them to our staff, and I think, as you can tell, we haven't had time to review the letter at all.
Yes.
So we're not really prepared to...
Understood.
...give you any information back tonight, but we will certainly consider everything you presented to us and take this under advisement, and also consult with our town council. Do any members of the board have any specific questions for...
Yes.
From the staff, were they properly noticed down there this year?
They were noticed of the subdivision.
In January.
They were not renoticed.
The letter that's on the town website of January of the 108 Mueller with a Mueller Road access was sent to us and all our neighbors. None of us got any additional notice after that January notice.
And we were fully in support of the original proposal, having the subdivided lot come in from Mueller. And so we had even talked to our neighbors and said, "We're fully in support of this. Let us know if you need anything else from us." Not a word from them in terms of any changes whatsoever. And it was only through a very casual conversation with our neighbors, with whom we have very good relationships, so it was kind of amazing.
We thought we did.
We thought we did. You never know until, I guess, things like this happen. But it was only through a casual conversation with the daughter that she said, "Oh, Sue, we're going to be having a Cormier Road address."
That's the first...
Well, you can imagine my shock to hear that.
That was mid-August of this year.
That was August 18th, before we left for a two-week vacation, so you can imagine how our vacation went after hearing that.
Well, we spent quite a bit of time on this, so...
We did.
We would have been here if we knew...
Months ago.
...that there was a consideration of our property being modified in any way, and that's our point exactly. I mean, we have all of the abutting neighbors here to support this, as well as many neighbors along several adjoining streets. So this is the kind of turnout we would have probably had here had we gotten the second notice, because we all believed it was going to the Mueller roadside.
Right, right. Okay. If there's no other questions, I think we probably will just take this under advisement, and we'll have to get back to you. Okay? But thank you for bringing this information forward.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at citizens' time? Please come forward.
But this is just the standing awarding. It says the sewer thing, but our guide, this is, you six couple copies from the Engineering Department with notes from our town character and this is the guide. As to...
Welcome, Mr. Miller. And please, both of you state your name for the record.
My name is Reginald Griffin, and I live at 25...
Yeah, Chair, I can't hear.
Can they step out? Thank you. Sorry. I'm sorry.
There are some older citizens over here that...
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Reginald Griffin, and I live at 25 Gloria Circle in Burlington, and my property backs up on the General Walker Estates project. And I will, at this point, defer to my associate here, if you will.
I'm Dave Miller. I live on 19 Gloria Circle, also a town meeting member for Precinct 4. And we sort of have two general topics or questions. One is, I'd like to get an update on if there was any resolution to all the problems that were found in the July 25th walkthrough of the property by building, planning, conservation, and engineering. And my neighbor here, Dr. Griffin, has a technical question he'd like to ask.
Right. My particular interest is in the infiltration system that's behind 3 and 5 Dartmouth. The infiltration system was installed, and then it was capped over. And then after it had been signed off, i.e. the project itself, evidently it was resurfaced again, and the property was raised another two to three feet. One, I'd like to know if there's anything that's going to be done about that, because subsequently, in that top layer, evidently, an irrigation system has been installed, and it just seems unusual or strange to me that you put in an infiltration system to remove water, and then you put a sprinkler system in-ground on top of that. However, maybe someone knows something I don't. Another reason I have is that as the project goes forward, and I assume it may, there are supposed to be another two or three homes being installed or built. And an infiltration system is supposed to be installed behind our home. And what I'm wondering is, is that going to be installed the way this other one was, or is it still in the works? Because you've gone from one, I guess, builder constructing to another organization called, I believe, Wayland or something like that, and they're involved. So my question is, is this going to be transferable? You blessed the project originally. Does that mean it's blessed forevermore? Or do people come before you once again and present their case, and then you make a separate decision? And it also includes this new infiltration system that presumably was supposed to go in previously, but may go in in the future? That's the end of my concern. If somebody could address that, let me know what's happening.
Do you want to take that?
We did send a letter on August 29th to Waypoint, which is who seems to be managing and building this project. I know you've seen some other folks out there, and we've asked those questions as well. But as previously mentioned, we sent the letter, and I did send a copy to Mr. Miller, stating the issue about the grading, the infiltration system, the outlet, the driveway grade, the driveway grade that runs directly toward the back of your property, which is a problem, the downspouts which are not connected, which are supposed to be connected. And we have stated that there cannot be any additional construction or any movement on construction in any of the other lots until such time as the result. We did get correspondence this week that they're underway doing, looking at the engineering. As I mentioned to Mr. Miller, that our engineer's going to submit the report. Our Engineering Department will review it. If it's a red flag that we need additional review, we'll take that step. But right now, you're not going to see any movement on construction until we feel comfortable with resolving those matters. I'm also surprised when I heard the infiltration system was going in. If it's going in and they need to change the grade, it's going to come out again. So I agree, that's a step that was curious. In terms of Waypoint moving forward, right now, the subdivision was approved as General Walker Estates to the subdivider, which at that time was...
Did Sac and...
It was the Sac, because they had a different operating name, though. But anyway, so there's still the subdividers. If there is any sale of any of the properties, they need to, right now, when you approve a subdivision, you have all the public improvements, every single lot is held under a covenant. And you need to release this board, they need to come before this board to release any of the lots for building purposes and for the purposes of sale. And at that time, we review all of the public improvements, what's yet to be done, any issues that are outstanding, which I think both of you have been part of with some of these projects. What has been troubling with this project is we've gone through that process, we've understood what has been complete, and then additional work happens on top after that. So, you know, once we go out and do all the inspections and check all the grades, and as you mentioned with 3 and 5, you know, all the grades were there, the outlet was there, and then we went back and it was two feet higher, and then we couldn't see any of the riprap, and then, you know, so, you know, I...
Is there any repercussions or anything that happens when somebody does something blatant like that? That after the property's signed off, work is done, the chintz have been done?
Um...
Raise the grade by two to three feet afterwards, then irrigation system, there's irrigation systems now in both houses, 3 and 5 backyards. So all that work's going on even before these issues have been resolved. And I guess it just always frustrates me that there's no, doesn't seem to be any repercussions for that happening.
So right now, the best repercussion we have is to hold up all the other lots, because they're still under the covenant. I mean, certainly for earth moving and earth removal and, you know, you have need of earth-moving permits from the Board of Health and for...
Has a certificate of occupancy been issued for 5 Dartmouths?
Um, I'm not sure if the final has been.
Is that going to be at least held up until these issues are resolved?
Anything we have outstanding is held up, whether, if that is one of those things, that will be held up. So, but we've made it clear that there's no...
I mean, do they have to come back here? Because I remember there was a Planning Board meeting for 3 Dartmouths. Were you released? Does the same thing have to happen to 5 Dartmouths?
Yes.
Yes.
So as far as I know, that hasn't happened yet.
I'm just not positive right now. But I can tell you that the letter we sent and all communications we've had so far is that nothing else will be signed off until we have resolved the issues that we know are in front of us right now. So I know it's been a long time, and I know it's really frustrating, and I feel very much for all of the neighbors. And I know this board does as well.
But to answer your question, we're not signing off on anything until they've fixed this. And the repercussion would be that they have to dig it up and do it over again.
Yeah, well, that was, I think, in one of my communications with you, I said, "I don't have confidence in their civil engineer, because of some things that I wrote you about."
Right.
And to me, he's just going to rub a stamp and say, "Oh, the grade's fine." And my point of view is, the plan was approved at a certain grade that should be required to bring it down to the way the plan was approved.
We agree. And our Engineering Department will review it first. If they find anything amiss, then we would have, we would have like a, not a peer review, but what would you call it? We'd have to call in another engineering firm. So we would not accept their engineering firm's stamp if our town engineering doesn't agree with it.
Well, and if it is significantly different, and there's issues with it, they need to come in for this board to change it. I mean, it's a minor engineering change to the subdivision, at which time, then, we would have a peer review.
Right.
Because, you know, I know we mentioned that our garage now has water where we didn't, some of our neighbors, one of our neighbors' also garage has water that they didn't have before. Some of our backyards have more water pooling. There's been more water issues since those two houses went up. And so the fact that the grade is raised and the driveway issues and everything else doesn't make me feel very good right now.
No, I wouldn't feel very good if I were you either. These are very concerning issues, and I wish that we had a bigger hammer than we do, but...
I'll get you some.
We can hold everything up and refuse to let anything else happen until these are resolved. And I do apologize, because I know it's taking much longer than it should, and you've been extremely patient.
Well, my concern is, I realize they will get resolved. I'm just worried about what the resolution's going to be. That's my fear.
I understand that, but that resolution is not going to happen without you knowing about it. You're going to have, you'll have notice, and you'll know what's happening, and we're going to know what's happening. And I know what you've gone through there. I'm not signing off on something that's not what we originally agreed, what we originally approved. If they've changed it since to something other than we approved, I'm not signing off on it, and I don't think any other members of my board will.
Good thing. I appreciate it.
So if necessary, I mean, there are some more drastic steps, but unfortunately, if we've seen in previous subdivisions, when things kind of go dormant, dormant, if the more drastic steps only mean that they're going to continue to be dormant.
Yeah.
So if we actually have someone actively doing things, we try to have them resolve the matters if we can before we take more drastic steps, so...
But to resolve them, they would have to return the grade to what was originally approved.
Or come back and approve it and prove it works the way it is.
That would be difficult to prove. Yeah. Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think an argument can be made that an emergency exists. If, as Mr. Miller says, there's water pooling that wasn't there before, mosquitoes are breeding, and with the prevalence of West Nile and Triple E, I think there's an emergency, and some way should be found to correct it faster. If it's still with the Board of Health, they would certainly have jurisdiction over that. And that may be where the big hammer is.
Good point, Jack. Yes, Paul?
When I first came on the board, I noticed that a lot of times, developers were going out, kind of doing their own thing, and they'd say, "Oh, by the way," when we were making final approvals and so forth. And I said, "Everybody has a cellphone now, you know? If you're going to make a change, you have to pick up the phone and call the Planning Board and let them know what the change is going to be." And it resolved with one of our better-known builders in town, who made a nice wall where there was supposed to be a banking. The wall was better than the banking, and they said, "Well, we can't..." I said, and they said, "Well, you're not going to make them come to the board for that?" I said, "Absolutely." I think that, you know, we can make minor engineering changes if a pipe needs to be moved from here to there, but when people come out and do their own thing, I think we just ought to do, you know, I don't think they should get occupancy permits. I don't, I think we should just stop at where it is now, because, you know, they go on and on and say, "Well, it's there, and maybe it works better than it did before," and so forth. And unless we approve the changes, I think we ought to be able to put a stop order on it, and, you know...
I'd like to see the changes undone.
Huh?
I'd like to see the changes that were undone.
Undone, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and make them, make them cha, make them, uh, conform to the original plan.
Exactly.
Now, if they want to come back and raise lower or do anything else, they're perfectly able to do that. And we're unlikely to approve it, but, but they can if there's some reason for it. But for them to do something to that extent, I think that's kind of just in your face to the planning board if you want to know the truth.
More importantly, to the neighbors. So right now, we haven't signed off on anything. We don't intend to sign off on anything. Is work continuing?
Other than the irrigation systems that went in both, both backyards. And I know we saw somebody out there recently, it looked like a woman with a couple of kids. I assume they're the people who presumably purchased five. We could hear them talking about a fence going in and electric gate. And it looked like they were pointing out areas where I guess all of the posts were going to go for fence. So somebody looks like they're planning on putting a fence in. I don't know whether they have a pet or something, but that's, so that's something else that might be happening.
Is that in the house that has the incorrect grade?
Right, that's five Dartmouths.
Okay, we should probably reach out and make sure that they don't intend to do anything else on that site at all until this is resolved. Because they'll just have to tear it out.
At the date of the letter, we didn't have any, we didn't have any contact information for anybody. We sent something to, um, the real estate agent that we knew was involved, but not...
But now we do have that?
If there's someone there, we'll send it to five Dartmouth.
Oh, oh, the ne, oh...
But I didn't know.
But there isn't anybody living there, right?
Yeah, nobody's occupied that house, yes.
We, we didn't, we didn't sign, we didn't release that, right?
We did release it.
Released three?
No, we re, we released five. And we did an inspection. And then after that, all of this stuff happened. Because we, we did an inspection. We had an asphalt plan. We had everything in hand. And then they went in and covered everything up and raised the grade three or four feet. So that's the problem. Or, I'm sorry, not three or four, two or three.
After it was...
After we released it, after the asphalt plan was completed. So that's the issue we're having right now. And the driveway was poured. So these issues all came after we signed off on the house. If it's been sold.
Are you saying that five Dartmouth has a certificate of occupancy issued?
I'm not sure if it has a final. It might have a temp.
Oh, okay, because I don't remember anybody coming back. I don't remember Waypoint coming back here for that release like it did on three before they allowed somebody to move in.
I don't want to give you incorrect information, so I want to check, but...
So were you saying we released five? Were you released two?
We released number three.
We did an inspection.
You're saying we've released two properties in there?
I know we've done the, we did the inspection on three and five.
Yeah.
The utilities were there, the, we had the asphalt, we had the utilities. Everything was as it was supposed to be after we inspected it.
After inspected, but...
There was a lot of work done.
I only remember releasing one of those lots. I'm not sure.
They, they were in front of us. So that's when you guys had asked for the timeline for the completion of the rest of the lots.
Yep.
It was a month, you know, a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I only remember the planning board meeting that they came for, for three Dartmouths, not five.
I thought three as well.
Well, we'll have to check.
Let me check and give you a timeline.
You don't remember that. Hopefully it didn't happen. But let's make sure before we say definitively. Okay, thank you very much. And again, I'm very sorry for all of this.
Sorry to keep coming back here, but...
No, you, you have to keep coming back.
Good, I will.
You should, I would if I were you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, is there anyone else here for citizens' time? Yes, please come forward.
Oh, good evening. Can you, I'm okay here? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, my name is Mark Woods, uh, town meeting member, precinct seven. Uh, I just came here to support the Russells on Cormier Road. I had a chance to talk with other town meeting members in our neighborhood. And we do feel that they were not properly notified and it should be rescinded. So, um, just wanted to make sure my comments were on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else for citizens' time? Okay, yes?
I just have a general question. Excuse my ignorance.
Can, can you come forward? Because no one else will be able to hear you. But, no, please come forward.
And we just needed your name for the record.
Yes.
Cindy McNamara, uh, Travers Lane. I may not even be citizens' time. I received a certified letter just on a permit that's an application for a permit for...
It's Margaret, the Margaret.
Is that on the, yeah, on fifty Margaret? That's on the agenda, so I'll wait my turn.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, um, let's move on to announcements.
Announcements, big, big news. So, thank you to this board and to town meeting and everyone who was involved in our life science amendment. We have been granted from the Mass Biotechnology Council platinum status. We went from bronze status to platinum status, which is fantastic. I had meant, actually, I had meant to look up to see how many, um, communities were in platinum. But we are in an elite group and we should all be very proud of all your work. And, um, hopefully, we will in, entering a new era of life science companies coming to Burlington. So we're very, very excited to announce.
Well, thank you for all your work on it, both of you, because the staff did a lot of work to make this happen. We appreciate it.
Um, speaking of someone who's made a lot, done a lot of work to make things happen, I'll have, well, I will introduce, but Liz gets all the credit for the, um, as many of you know, the town has been moving into online permitting on platforms with Viewpoint. And our department will begin officially on October 1st. And Liz will say at least one sentence about how exciting this is. And she did all the work to get us there.
Well, I've been working with Amy, the building department, many other departments, um, and information technology to get us kind of into the 20th century, get an online permitting. It's been, it really has been a group effort. And Jen's been really helpful. Our admin has been great. The building department's been up and running since the beginning of the summer. And so now we're at a point where we can go live in October. And hopefully, after we go live, there will be others that join suit. We can only hope. And it's a really exciting thing for everybody.
Yes, and Jen Jalinas and Amy Warfield have been huge to get us there, so I...
Thank you.
It was Liz's, um, most official first meeting, so I wanted to thank her.
She gets a gold star on her forehead.
Very exciting, but not nearly as exciting as those last two. It's Household Hazardous Waste Day on the 21st. Francis Wyman School, eight thirty to twelve. Town meeting will be Monday, September 23rd, 7:30 at the high school. And on September 28th, if you have a whole big box of boxes of, uh, things to shred, Townwide Document Shred Day from September 28th from nine to noon. I hear you can bring two, two things you can carry. That's just two big boxes you can carry and shred, shred that. But, um, that's, that's all I have. Unless any of you have announcements.
Okay, and actually, Members Bayo, you have an announcement?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm big on diversity. So Sunday, September 29th, on the Common, the Indian Americans of Burlington are having their annual Diwali festival, which is a great event on the Common. Diwali is the festival of lights. This is a beautiful definition, I wanted to share it, that celebrates the triumph, triumph over light, of light over dark and good over evil and the blessings of victory, freedom, and enlightenment. So it's a great event from one to seven on the Common. I'll be there, hope to see you guys there. And they have a nice tree lighting. I think it's six or seven PM. So again, Sunday, the 29th, one to seven on the Common, the Festival of Diwali by our great Indians of America in Burlington.
Thank you, that's great. All right, let's move on to administrative matters. Item 7A is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change. 286 Cambridge Street, S and E Realty is the applicant. Welcome.
Hi, guys. How are you? Mike Telopoulos representing, uh, S and E Realty tonight.
Give us a quick summary of what to do.
So, if you recall, um, we're getting geared up to open up the bagel bar inside 286 Cambridge Street, where Old Town Liquor is located, as well as a couple of, um, retail spots. The, uh, one of the concerns that was brought up at that meeting was, in fact, the, the trash, um, the dumpster area that we were currently using. It was really the first time that it was brought to my attention. And so we wanted to get ahead of it and obviously get this taken care of, um, to squash all these concerns. So what we decided, uh, in working with Liz and, and Josh, enclosing a dumpster, there's an existing pad there that there used to be a compact dumpster that when the, uh, there was a, B and D Carpets was occupying the space, so they needed the big compactor. So we can utilize, as you'll see on the plans, you, you won't see the, the actual foundation or the, uh, what am I trying to say?
Pad?
The pad. But where that dumpster, yeah, thanks. Oh, perfect, all right. So this, this shows the, the, the old compactor, which has since been removed. And to the right in that almost alleyway is where a large dumpster has been positioned. And that was the concern of the neighbors. Clearly, it's, it's closer to the house than, than the old compactor was. And, um, it was, it was too easily accessible by the public to just kind of throw things at it. And it, for our own good too, uh, we're going to enclose what, exactly what you see. It's a six-foot-high vinyl fence. I actually got a proposal, uh...
So it's going into the location of the former compactor?
It'll go exactly where you see that old compactor. It'll be flush with the building. And even to take it a step further, the reason, the initial reason we couldn't put the dumpster there to begin with was the truck's accessibility. They couldn't access it. So it was, it was pushed so far back, almost where that, where you see the white, um, on the upper picture is, is where the dumpster starts now. So what I'm going to do is, I think I gave you a picture of a, a smaller dumpster that's mobile. And we're just, we're going to downsize the size of the dumpster, call for more frequent pickups. The dumpster, in, in order to fit it in that space, we'll have the double doors, dumpster will be pulled out, dumped, put back, doors closed, locked. So the only one to have access to it would be the, the tenants in the building.
Okay, and I noticed here that you've agreed to have the dumpster be emptied only between the hours of 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Can we say that is weekdays? Or is it going to be on weekends as well?
We, we actually have it contracted with JRM that they can't come before 8:00 AM, believe it or not.
Right.
Oh, is that what it says on there? I'm sorry.
It does say 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I'm wondering if it's going to be on weekends as well or only weekdays?
It's only going to be weekdays. And right now, it's only being picked up once a week. If we go to the smaller dumpster and we start to occupy the space and we, and we need to, uh, we need more frequent pickups, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, whatever. However, we almost have to wait and see, unfortunately.
But let's specify that it's weekdays only.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, is there any, uh, Ernie, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Phil?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The last time the applicant was here, we talked about, uh, trucks on the side roads. And, uh, understood that was going to be addressed. So I, I live right across the street and I come down that way to go to work and come back. And I've seen on multiple occasions, eighteen wheels on, on Pontos and facing the opposite way.
Which street, Pontos?
Pontos, and then on the other street, I've seen them too. But one occasion, I remember coming down the hill across the street and the, the eighteen wheel was parked kind of on the Pontos right-hand side facing Cambridge Street. And someone came around to take a right, right as, as, as right there. They actually had to, to, to turn to avoid the, the front of the truck that was sitting right on Pontos. They had to kind of scoot around, coming up the, the wrong way to head around to avoid that. So not only, I can understand how the neighbors are upset with the, the eighteen wheels parking on there, but, uh, I saw just an accident waiting to happen there the other time. So, uh, you know, we talked about it. And again, kind of things have, what do we do about enforcement on that when, uh, when we, you know? So I'm kind of hesitant to approve something like this until we can kind of take care of the big one. And the last one I saw was probably last week. So it's, it's something that I think we need addressed before I can even comment on what we've seen here today. need to address before I can even comment on what we've seen here today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, I would just ask two questions. One, um, are the trucks that are servicing any uses that are in the control of the applicant? And then, two, I know at the last meeting, um, member, uh, selectman, Marandy was here, um, for another matter, but came up and said that they would be happy to work with the applicant and other members of selectmen to address the issues on, on the streets as they are the, um, they control the, the roadways. But to the first question, I would certainly direct it to the applicant to say, if any of that truck traffic is from your businesses, how are you addressing, making sure that they're not on the residential streets?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we, it, it's, it's hard for us to, we do our best to explain to any of the, um, wholesalers that they need to pull all the way in. Uh, we've got a large receiving area to deal with that. You know, unfortunately, we're at delivery of some of these drivers that will just pull up, um...
You're not. If you refuse to let them unload and you won't take their, whatever it is that they're unloading, then they'll move all the way onto the property. If you tell them no, your truck's on the street, get it off the street, or you can't make your delivery, then they're not gonna park there.
Yeah. It was wanting to send over to work.
Right?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. Oh, yeah, of course.
So when you receive a delivery, you have to look out and see if they're on the street. And if they're on the street, you can't receive the delivery. Does that make sense?
Fair enough, yeah. And, and that's, that's me putting it on management that's at the store. Yeah, absolutely. We can, we can work with that, of course.
Um, I, I, I do suggest you continue to work with the Board of Selectmen as well. If there can be signage perhaps placed on the street so that it, the truck driver realizes before you tell him that you can't park there.
Yep, absolutely. And I, I know there's no parking signs there, too. And, um, and they actually, they, they did send some police presence since that meeting. Uh, I spoke with a couple of patrolmen, that they were, they were just keeping an eye on those streets to make sure, not so much the trucks as the concern, but the, you know, uh, customers and patrons parking along the side. And they didn't seem to...
That's hard for you to control, but the trucks you can control.
Right, right, but, yeah, it goes hand in hand.
I would, that's what I think. I think the trucks are much easier to control than patrons.
Yeah, I agree. But I, I just, it's good conversation. That's all I'd probably say about that. So I, I probably wouldn't be able to support this based on, unless it's something we can do.
The problem, unfortunately, is we already, we've approved that. This is just a minor, this is to, to actually increase the aesthetics of the...
Yeah, so I, I approved that on the, on the basis of the trucks not being parked in the street.
Right.
We had the first conversation, so...
And, and they are, you're saying, so...
Yeah, so I'm gonna kind of hold them, you know, whatever. I'll listen to the rest of the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, what, what I want to ask is, um, I, I don't want to hold this up because this is actually to the benefit of the neighbors to enclose the dumpster. It's, it's slightly the way it is now. We went, moved out of that roadway and we wanted it enclosed. But what can we do, or what leverage do we have to make sure that this stops?
Um, well, I think, as you mentioned, if the applicant had either, um, the, the stores in which they control, or they have tenants, or which they have leases, that they should be able to conduct all their business within the confines of the property. I mean, a lot of these properties are, this one's actually a pretty good size, but some of these other properties are, are smaller and it's difficult to navigate. But they should ha, if there are sites that are difficult to navigate, we should either have times which they might be easier and/or plans as to how they should be dropping off to whoever is doing deliveries. Occasionally, you're gonna have someone who hasn't been there before, but if they're just like in some other sites that we've had, if, um, there can be, um, kind of directives from you and/or your tenants to say, to hand out to people who are doing deliveries, or email them, or something, you know, if you know you're gonna order, do, do you control the, the, um...
Yeah, so along those lines, you know, I, I can even take it a step further. And I, and, and what I'll do is I'll make it a point to reach out to, um, the powers that be within those companies, to make sure that, a lot of times, they can put a notice on the, on the invoice itself, and, and it'll give special instructions, where the delivery goes, et cetera. Uh, we can make sure that there's a note on there that delivery will not be accepted unless the, unless the truck is, uh, fully on the, uh, property. So I, I mean, that's a first step at least. And, and again, at the same time, um, just kind of instilling that into the, the, the management, knowing that, listen, don't, don't even think about taking this delivery in until the truck's off the road, you know.
I mean, the first line of defense is you have to let people know.
Right.
And if we can communicate to people and continue to communicate and have signage up and no parking, I mean, we have the no parking signs. Is there some sort of loading signs we can direct? I, I don't, you know, you don't want to oversign, but you also need to educate.
So, yeah, so I think that's a good idea. So if there's a condition in there that you put that, that the deliveries on site have, have the note on the invoice to say they must unload on property. And so then, next time we get one, then you look at to see if it's compliance to the, the invoices, you can actually prove that.
Yep. I see what you're saying, yep.
And so, yeah, I'm looking for a little bit more, you know, a little meat to it and we can validate that. And then the next time you come in, we say, okay, bring your invoices and let's take a look.
Yes, we'd like you to provide those to staff.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
We'll put a condition to that effect.
You might substitute the word shipping documents for invoice.
Yeah, private ship, uh, yeah.
Packing lists and things like that.
Yeah.
Invoice may come to...
Well, invoice and/or other similar correspondence with anyone that's, I mean, we'll have a catch-up.
Yep, thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, member Gaffney just mentioned it was actually a Budweiser delivery truck. So if you could reach out to your, um, your, your alcohol, that, that particular distributor or vendor, maybe that'll point you in the right direction. I will add, for your benefit, that, again, like I mentioned in our last meeting, I pass the, the shopping center area twice a day, sometimes three times, depending on where I go for lunch. And I've never seen it. But he mentioned this is around 8:30 in the morning. So that's usually after I go by, I go by before eight. And, um, I haven't really noticed any parking problems, 'cause I've actually now been attuned to watching. So I've noticed that that's been good.
Yeah, I haven't seen any parking problems with cars, just the trucks, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's good. My one concern, uh, one of the butters at the last meeting brought up the, the proximity of her neighborhood window to the, where the dumpster will be. I know it'll be set back. What, will the dumpster have like a cover on it or a, a lock on the top of it, in addition to what's...
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I thought, I thought there was another, um, a picture of, uh, it's, it's, it's about six feet, um, in width, four feet deep. And they have, uh, there's two lids unhinged, they're closed. So those will be covered, um, in addition to the locked gates as well, so...
Perfect.
And I actually spoke with her since.
Okay, good.
And we've, we've touched base. I told her what our intentions were and...
Awesome.
Clearly, she was happy, so.
Thanks, Mike. Nothing for Madam Chair.
Thank you. Joe?
Yep, no, I, I like, I like enclosure. Um, it's gonna be a big, I, I think aesthetically, a just a, a nice addition to that area over there. Um, the question I have is now, so do you, you've identified a big problem with people throwing, just public throwing their trash into your dumpster over there, or...
Uh, yeah, it happens. I, and again, it, the, the problem is it's, it's wide open. We, we have, I've got a camera up there, too, and we've, we've gone back and kind of spot-checked and...
So if you found out who does it, in other words, this isn't necessarily gonna prevent that problem from happening. They're gonna just throw it right over the fence.
You want names, Joe?
No, because it's, you know, in other words, they, I mean, I, I, I don't care, 'cause it'll be inside the fence. But for your purposes, do you think they just throw their stuff over the fence?
I know. There's people like that, unfortunately.
Right.
Well, that's what I mean. If you have a camera, can I do, that's, you know, it's
the problem.
Yeah, if you, if you look at, if you look at the top, uh, the, the corner where, where you see the white, um, there's now a camera there, so.
Okay.
Um, it's a deterrent, at least, you know.
Yeah. All right. And, uh, as far as all the departments, they're all, um, approved as submitted without any comments, so.
Comments from the selectmen?
No.
What's the comment from the selectmen?
No, there's no comments, he said.
Uh, there's no comments, I mean, I, I see. Selectmen didn't have anything.
They didn't, they made no comment. Okay, thank you.
Paul?
I have no comment either.
Jack?
No, the only, uh, change, most of this language is the pre-existing.
Right.
The, the bold print is the new affecting this.
Other than the, the new amendment, uh...
The weekdays only.
Weekdays only and adding loading information to the...
And you did say the gate is gonna have a lock on it?
Yes.
Good, okay.
All right, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion.
Oh, sorry, you're right. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, then we can close.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Just go straight to... You can still ask, but it's...
Make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change per property located at 286 Cambridge Street to install a new 10-by-12 white vinyl enclosure with locking gate to house a two-yard dumpster as reflected on plan entitled Plan of Land 282-296, Cambridge Street, Burlington, Mass., prepared by William Sprague, dated July 16, 2019, received August 28, 2019, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms, conditions, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate your cooperation as well. Like, you know, you're gonna, you'll, I'm sure you'll put some good effort into making sure those, that gets addressed, and we appreciate that.
Of course. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Moving on, item 7B is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 3234 Third Avenue. The Norblum Company is the applicant.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Todd Fremont Smith with Norblum Company. With me is Frank Di Pietro. We're here on a relatively minor matter, thankfully. It's 32, uh, Third Avenue. This is a, an existing 26,000-square-foot, single-story building that's being renovated for a growing tenant at Northwest Park. Most of the relevant changes for this board, I believe, are at the site plan level. Um, Frank's gonna run through that. I think as part of this reorganization of the, of the, of the parking lot, we intend to extend the, the little walking path that goes to and from Third Avenue. And I have a photograph of the, of a representative walking path that goes from Third Avenue over towards Kings, which I think is...
Okay. Good evening. For the record, Frank Di Pietro, an engineer with the BSC Group. And we're here in deference to Mr. Raymond's comments earlier to seek a minor engineering change before we undertake any changes on the site.
Thank you.
With that being said, very quickly, um, this site is 3234 Third Avenue. So, um, the, um, Redstone Restaurant is here, Third Ave's right here, the Archer Hotel is here. This is the area. You can see it's a beautiful, wonderful, all-paved parking lot. So that's part one. Part two is, under the standards, we take the record site plan from minor, and put red on it. This, you really can't read very well. And we also have the Asbeld plans from the roadway that went up from Archer Hotel. So I'm gonna switch to a wonderful colored plan, which is in your set, that essentially shows the building. Um, it shows the access, Third Ave is up here, uh, Third Ave area is over in this location. This is the driveway that comes up from the Archer Hotel. So what we're proposing to do is really re-align the rear parking area. Uh, the building itself, there's gonna be a new tenant going in there. They're gonna basically reskin these sides of the building to make it look more, uh, we're going down from 119 parking spaces, adding green space. We're going down to 118. So we're only losing one parking space. Um, as, uh, Mr. Fremont Smith said, this is the portion of that walkway that starts on the other side of Third Avenue. We're proposing to put this walkway in here. We have an island here and a couple islands here. There'll be landscaping similar to what was shown there. There may be some kind of a feature here. So we're extending as we go along into the next development. The game plan here will be to essentially, um, re, strip down the existing pavement, put on a new pavement. We're not changing the grading or anything else. Um, this is a new access loading dock into the building. There will be a trench drain right here that picks up the water, takes it out, ties it to drainage on the site. Uh, really, the site drains down in this direction, so we're not changing any of the drainage. Um, we've gone through, we've added some new, uh, pervyce area. Um, two modifications to the number that, uh, we were increasing the pervyce area by about 460 square feet. Um, one of the comments we had from the building department is to, um, add in two handicap van spaces. We've got one here. So we're converting this. We're gonna lose a little bit of green space here. And the second discussion with the project team and other folks in the town, there's no sidewalk that goes out from the building to Third Ave. So we're gonna extend this sidewalk out there. So at the end of the day, we'll still have about 100, 120 square feet of additional green space on the site. It's not a, a major amount, but it is a decrease in the pervyce area. Um, other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Stan?
Um, we are very happy with the proposal. We agree with the sidewalk going out to Third Avenue. Um, and then we just had asked to take a look at the site itself and any, since they're not redoing the, well, you're resurfacing the parking lot, right?
Right.
And just making sure that any curbing on site is repaired so drainage function is as it's supposed to function. Um, otherwise, we have no issue.
Okay, thank you.
We support the proposal.
Thank you. Jack, you wanna start us off?
Do you have department comments?
All those first?
Please.
Yep. So the, uh, inspector of building, uh, buildings favorable with conditions, and they can just, just suggest adding at least one handicap pop, parking space for the van, which Frank had already incorporated into it in the access rules and regulations. That's their comment. Uh, engineering is favorable without comment. And border health is, um, border health offers the, uh, following comments and references. They're standard comments.
That's correct.
You, you have copies of those, so we should be, we should be fine with those. That's, they're fairly standard. So, uh, that's it for comments. Water Selectmen, no comment. Uh, police and fire, no comments. And Concom, no comments.
No, I think it's been explained pretty well. I'm happy.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Paul?
I like it, actually. I, just, a couple of questions, actually. So the darker that we're looking at in there, that's the paved parking lot. So I'm, I'm trying to recall what, coming in off of Third Ave in this direction, is that, is that, um, paving block, or is that hot top?
This is actually a betuminous concrete.
Oh, yeah, that, from this direction here, yeah.
Over in here?
Yeah.
Uh, there is some paving block, and this is the, the drop-off of the Archer Hotel.
Is that paving block, or...
Some paving block here. This area here is typical betuminous concrete, asphalt pavement.
Okay. So the only one that, that, this area is paving block, and this is actually betuminous?
That's correct.
And then, so you're gonna have the walkway extending over here and coming through here. So on the hot top, where it crosses over, are we gonna have a delineation for the walkway?
So right now, this piece here, up to the, already exists. That portion of the sidewalk already, uh, that walkway already exists. So this would be the area here. And yes, we would mark this area at this location with a crosswalk.
So you'll mark it with a crosswalk. Any, so it, it, on this area here, where, where it already exists, is that, it's over hot top? Does that, is that delineated with paving block or some sort of...
I think it's just asphalt.
So just that, there's nothing that indicates that that's a crosswalk going across?
I'd have to look at, I don't think, I don't remember a, a painted crosswalk here.
Yep.
Um, and I don't think that this was a driveway. I know that, we've got the ramps here, we've got the handicap access along here. I'd have to go look and say, I don't remember. But I think it's just pavement, no crosswalk mark.
I, my suggestion would be to, just as you're gonna delineate on the other spot, to delineate something on that piece of the crosswalk as well.
I think that's a great idea. Where, where we have pavement to market, clearly that it's a pedestrian way.
Market.
Or painted, painted green or something, yeah.
Painted, or if you want, even if, if you wanted some paving block to match up with the other, you know, that's your choice. But as long as there's a delineation, I think it would be great to have that.
That's a good comment, too, because it, it's our intention to continue this pathway north as we redevelop the buildings. And we, we always talked about doing that and connecting north-south, so.
Yep, so...
And people do, when they see this type of a pathway, they get on it and it protects them from the traffic.
It's, it's a safety, it's a feeling of safety. And I, I think it's a comfort zone and it, and it really creates connectivity on...
I agree.
On sites, you know, so. Uh, that would be my only comment. I, I, I like, uh, what you're doing there. I think that's, that'll be a great admission, so.
Thank you, Joe. Mike?
Looks good to me, Madam Chair. No comments.
No?
No comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, just, no, I, I didn't notice, are, are you adding islands to the parking area to Frank? You are, right?
So just...
We don't, we, we don't have to go too far. They...
Yes, so, all the green shown in this area, it was new pavement, a new green space. There's a little piece of green here, a little piece of green here. But all these are new islands that were...
They're all vertical granite?
Uh, yes. I think, I think we've got some sloth granite along the edges here. All the ends are vertical granite.
Okay, at least the ends. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I think we're ready to move on. I think this looks good.
Thank you.
You want a motion?
I would, thank you.
To approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change of property located at 32 and 34 Third Avenue to improve parking and pedestrian access in the area northwest of the building, including repaving, restriping, new landscape islands, and a new sidewalk as reflected on the plan entitled Third Avenue Redevelopment, 3234 Third Avenue in Burlington, Massachusetts, Middlesex County, prepared by BSC Group, dated August 29, 2019, consisting of four sheets, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions.
As amended, 'cause we added the, what Joe requested.
As amended.
Yes, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I like these little ones.
Well, let's hope the next one goes just as quickly, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Actually, I think you should stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can just stay. Um, our next matter is item 8A, a continued public hearing, petition to amend the Northwest Park Planned Development District zoning bylaw provisions submitted by Norblum Development Company. So, um...
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein, uh, Fremont Smith, Norblum Company. Uh, since we've been here last, we've been to the, uh, the zoning bylaw review committee. Um, we've, uh, spent a lot of time working with staff, with, uh, a number of people in town, solicited a lot of, uh, comments. But with the zoning bylaw review, I think, uh, from the original submission, we've gone from the original filing of ten, uh, the major changes are from the original filing of 10% affordable to 14% now, uh, which, uh, is, is a big jump. Um, and we've clarified some of the other provisions, uh, with respect to the provision of senior affordable housing and how that would operate, um, as a priority. And, um, I believe at the last meeting, the committee voted, uh, a substitute motion that will be introduced by that committee on town meeting floor on, uh, Monday night. Um, I wanna thank, uh, staff. I wanna thank a number of people, uh, the planning board. I wanna thank the committees, particularly the zoning bylaw. A lot of people put a lot of work in this, and hopefully we'll, uh, see where it goes. It's an ambitious undertaking.
Thank you.
We had a very nice open house last night at, at the Huntington.
That was the doorkeeper, so I think...
And again, I wanna thank the members who, who keep coming to these meetings over and over again. But we had a good attendance and people enjoyed walking in the building and seeing the product. So that, that happened last night, which was, was a good, good time.
Thank you. Um, Kristen, did you have anything you wanted to add before I asked the board?
Um, I just wanted to walk you through, um, quickly just what's in front of you.
Okay.
Um, so, and I actually do have to amend the initial, after the close of the public hearing, so, um, I can do that if you let me make that motion for you at that time.
Okay.
But, um, in general, we, um, this was first submitted to the Board of Selectmen, um, on May 16. We opened, um, the hearing on, and advertised for our meeting of June 20. Um, as you know, that we've had a lot of dialogue, um, over, over the last couple of months. We had the joint meeting with Land Use, zoning bylaw review, and the planning board. Um, and really just talked a lot about, um, affordable housing, senior affordable housing, and have gone from 10% to 14% affordable units, um, on site. But overall, um, the has, have made, and, um, the applicant's made a lot of commitments. Um, overall, what's been printed in the warrant and what is, um, what we had discussed recently at Land Use, went from a 13 to 14%, clarifying some of the language as to, you know, if it's the town acting through the Board of Selectmen. What you have in front of you is you have a staff recommendation, motion, motion, and one through five, and I'll, I'll go through them. And then the amended motion, um, that, the final amended motion, which has been submitted by, um, Sherri Ellis, Town Meeting Member, President Three Chair of the zoning bylaw review committee. So, um, anyway, so you, so your motion will include the original as advertised on the June 20, as amended in the warrant, as well as further amended by zoning bylaw review. We also, uh, as all, as the planning board, um, was required to hold a hearing on all town meeting items, to, I mean, you are the public hearing session, really, prior to town meeting, not to, um, foreclose any one of town meeting making further comments. But this is really the public hearing process to kind of grow and shape the amendment to, to really, to make it the best it can be. Um, so the first item is to recognize the final amendment. The second item is the commitment from Norblum, um, included in a letter dated September 16, 2019, but with, that we've previously discussed, um, to include within the special permit, the future special permit issued by the planning board, a commitment by the Norblum Company to offer to the town for the planning board to accept within that special permit, up to $25,000 for the retention of a necessary, of necessary professionals and/or legal counsel to assist the town with to assist the town with the connection of the preparation of the Affordable Housing Agreement and the development of its applicable guidelines and eligibility criteria for implementation of the local senior affordable units, as we've discussed throughout this hearing. The third piece, also in said letter, is that they have agreed for the terms and conditions of affordability preference will be part of said housing restriction agreements, will should be executed by the applicant in town prior to the issuance of the first building permit for any units developed and authorized as a result of the zoning amendment. The fourth is, again, a commitment from the Nordblum Company included in this letter, to include within this future special permit issued by the planning board, a commitment by the Nordblum Company to have the units be placed in walkable areas in proximities to amenities within Northwest Park. And the final, which I certainly would open to this board for edits if you see fit, as we began to discuss at the last meeting, that the planning board, not a commitment from the applicant, but from the planning board in a recommendation to town meeting, that the planning board recommends that the Board of Selectmen form a committee to include representatives of relevant town departments, boards, and committees, including but not limited to the planning department and board, zoning bylaw review, council on aging, veterans. I would also include in that Housing Opportunities Partnership and the Land Use Committee, which I don't have in the original language, to assist in the creation and implementation of the Affordable Housing Restriction Agreement, applicable guidelines and eligibility criteria for implementation of the local senior affordable units, as discussed. So if there's any edits to that, we welcome them. But that is what is in front of you. And we recommend favorably, I think we've had a lot of tremendous discussion, very much in line, as I originally stated at the first hearing, with the goals of the master plan to try to include a diversity of affordable housing options, as well as a diversity of options for all age groups, including seniors, and to have senior affordable options with the town involvement, I think is definitely one of the goals of the plan, knowing that really to get in shape what we need is for all of us to be involved in making this happen. And we're lucky enough to be in a position with the SHI units in town to be able to do something like this. So that's all I have, and I'm open to any questions. And we, the staff is favorable to the petition in front of you.
Thank you. Ernie, would you like to start us off?
Sure. I am definitely fully in favor of recommending to Town Meeting that they overwhelmingly pass this issue. We've been discussing the need for affordable senior housing for a long time. And through the master plan process, it was one of the primary topics, so. And this is a very good way to do it, as far as I'm concerned. And the amenities are there. People have suggested, well, they weren't able to, are they having trouble filling the affordable units at the, at Corporate Center, the Davis Project, I'm not sure what they're calling it now, but. And I think we're talking apples and oranges there. I mean, there's, you can't walk anywhere from there except to the gas station to get a soft drink or something. In this, in this area, you have less than, I'm hoping, and Nordblum has committed to a, the units that are being built be close enough for seniors to walk to, wagmans and whatever. And I attended most, if not all, of the meetings, so I've already had my say, I guess. One other thing I'd add to the, to the group of people that are parties that would develop the agreement would be, obviously, we have to get the Board of Selectmen in there, too.
Of course. Thank you.
Other than that, I'm kind of all set with it, right now, at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I spent a lot of time thinking about this one. I mentioned at one of the subcommittee meetings or the planning board meeting here, that the last paragraph here about the rent not being less than the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Economic Development Qualified Subsidized Units. So the rents of here are not going to stay stagnant. They're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna stabilize. They're gonna be going up in all cases. So, you know, where I see the rents going up for the people that aren't under this condition, I would, I always kind of think to say, instead of it being not less than that, I would say probably not more than that. So, you know, so now you have really, you know, kind of that subsidized rent for the seniors. And then I kind of, I step back a little bit, and there were a couple of things I think we had gotten information or were looking for information on how many people that used to be from Burlington or Burlington residents moved in there, to kind of get the sense of who's currently there at this point. And then I say, so what I'm weighing is benefit for the town versus kind of changing the town from 300 to 600 to the next one, I know you said 1,200 is probably your max out there, and how that, how that changes things. And then we have the establishment that you were talking about, Ernie, that puts us over the top. Now, once these don't count in there, so now we're now taking that nice number that we had, and now we're kind of nibbling away at it again, another 300, when they come before us again, it's gonna nibble that down. And we've got some room to breathe on it, but that wasn't the intent of doing the 40B. So I said, okay, you're gonna get, hopefully Burlington 42 seniors, and I appreciate you going up from the 13 to 14. I go, so then we get that, so that's great. And what's the, what are we kind of giving up for that? And then it's kind of in conflict of what we said in the master plan, is to say, you know, we don't, we're not going into the multiple unit housing type of arena, so you're conflicted there. So I try to get in my mind to say, is the 42 people we're gonna get in there, hopefully gonna be Burlington residents? Because it's, you know, it's gonna be our decision and with local preference, which always gets me. And how much of the local preference are you gonna, you know, you get there? It should be 100% of Burlington, in my opinion. So that's the way you guarantee your bank for your buck, with those 42 seniors that would go in there at the time. Just maybe staff, from my recollection, on the previous building that they have, is that like a 10%? And that's to the, to the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Restriction?
The existing 300 units is, the Planned Development District requires it to be 10% to offset those additional 300, the additional units, 10% must be subsidized housing inventory, D H C D accepted affordable units, and they are.
Yeah. So then, you know, I kind of about think of this really, because I said I gotta make a decision on this. So I said, so kind of think a little weird here. So if you took that other building and you say, well, forget about those units, and I don't know if you can.
Which other building?
The building that you had the open house at.
Existing buildings, Tremont and Huntington.
With the 10%?
Tremont and Huntington.
The Tremont and Huntington. So if you get that, you say, okay, we don't really need that for the housing stock to get us up to the percentage we are now. And maybe make that, that existing one the same thing as here. So now you get 80 people right in that area, you know?
There's already people living there, though.
No, I understand. I understand. As you go through attrition, because they're renters and they're not condos, you know? So that's what kind of my brain goes a little step further to say, okay, so that's, you're nibbling here. And I say, can you, if we get rid of that, 10% there, because we're in really good shape with what we did at Corporate Place.
Did that 10% count towards where we are now?
Yes, yeah, it does.
But if you get rid of it, how?
So the affordable, so the existing units are qualified SHI units. We did the calculation, including from, after we did Corporate Drive, we have a buffer of just under 2,000 units we'd have to add before we reach anywhere near threatening the 10% again. So, which is why we have this flexibility to entertain different housing type. I haven't done a calculation, if we take out the 30 units that are in here, but, you know, again, you're, but they're already under an affordable housing restriction that has been signed by the Selectmen. You know, could, could you have a future zoning amendment and/or future amendment to that zoning? I mean, the housing, affordable housing agreement? Maybe. But the bylaw requires those units to be affordable units, which affordable units, when we have it in the zoning bylaw, is affordable as accepted by D H C D as SHI units. So, you know, you'd have to look at a couple of different types of amendments. But with adding additional 300, having these 42 at 14% units not under SHI, we still have a ton of running room before we're worried about threatening the 10%.
What I think is, you get rid of the 300 that's in the building now, and you kind of take those off, and then you put them on the same type of.
I'm not sure we have the authority.
Would you make them affordable? Can you take them off the list? Do you know?
Well, your affordable housing is in perpetuity. The restriction is in perpetuity.
Right, right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Whether you could or not, it's not what's in front of you. That's right.
No, no, yeah, what I'm saying is.
It's an idea.
Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank you, Todd and Bob, for all the hard work you've done on this. I mean, it's been a long, a long process, and we appreciate, you know, your due diligence. And I'm very happy to see that we're at 14%, which I'm on board with. And I've done a lot of hard thinking about this one, as you guys heard my comments at the last meeting. And I went, had a conversation with the one person I think that could assuage my thoughts and fears. And had a nice conversation with Marge McDonald, and she, as you guys know, she's fully on board. She's fully supportive. And if you guys are good enough for Marge, you're good enough for me. So I'm fully in support and wish you luck on Monday night.
Look forward to working with her if this does pass Town Meeting. She's a great person and understands the issues and.
We had a great discussion, and she was very happy. I reached out. We had a nice meeting and a nice conversation.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I really, I just needed that to go forward. And being a newer member of the board, I'm taking this very seriously, my election and my appointment on the board.
I would hope as an older member of the board, too, you will, too.
What?
Years from now, I hope.
But I'm, but it's just, that's just how I am. So Marge was very happy to hear from me and a nice meeting. And it's my hope that, I know this is further down the line, that the buildings will be redeveloped buildings as opposed to new construction buildings, but we can, we can talk about that down the line. I wish you luck and thank you for all your hard work.
We're doing a lot of redevelopment as well, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, can I make one comment?
Of course.
I think to your point, I think Member Pembroke made the comment in the beginning, it's an option. It's an option. It's not for everyone, but it's an option. It'll be hopefully many other options. And I'd be remiss to say, I appreciate the acknowledgement of the work that we did, but frankly, it's our job.
There's a lot more work coming.
Right. You don't know, we were talking about that earlier, you don't know the magnitude of the amount of work coming because we're going into virgin territory, which is gonna be very interesting and very challenging. But the staff, and there were people in the audience, and there are people in town who put a lot of work into this, that it's not their job. And the commitment that you don't see, that, you know, we sit here, we see it, they put a lot of effort into this. So I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to them for getting us to where we are today. And hopefully it cares, but a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into it. But it is an option. And hopefully there'll be many other different creative options.
It may not be our job necessarily, but it's our town, so.
Right.
We definitely have a stake in that.
Well, it is our job. We're just not getting as paid as much as you are.
That's what he wants to say.
We would be happy if you shared your wealth with the time that we put in as well.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you, Bob. Joe?
No, I want to commend him. I really, again, and I will reiterate and very strongly reiterate that this is, it fulfills a need. You know, we put together that Senior Housing Options Committee years and years ago, and we've addressed a lot of senior needs, but we haven't addressed them all. And this is an option that addresses one that we have not addressed in the past. We also need nursing home facilities here, but that's another jewel together. We have plenty of assisted living. But this is, is an exciting option that we get here. And it's, and the most exciting part about it is it's Burlington. Right? I mean, there's nobody that is gonna take advantage of this other than Burlington residents. And, and it's, and it's a vibrant place for them to be. It's, I could see myself there at 60 years old. I mean, I could.
It's not that far off, Joe.
No. Don't remind me, but, but thank you for that. I think that's, you know, that's gonna be a tremendous asset. And I, and I hope Town Meeting feels the same way and overwhelmingly votes in favor of this.
Thank you, Joe.
Any department comments?
I don't have any department comments on this.
Paul?
Oh, sorry, no, there are not.
Being the most senior, senior, senior member here. It was very interesting. Somebody recently said, as I think of this, there was one Selectman not too long ago who was very much against the town of Burlington getting into the housing business. And opposed to that, a minor comment to the side, somebody recently wanted a cemetery plot. And they said, and I said, well, I said, you know, we're not in the cemetery business. Well, what do you mean? I said, look, we do police, fire, schools, and so forth. But I said, we don't do cemetery. So I said, you can't look to us now. If we want to get in the cemetery business, sometime maybe we can. But we're not now, but we do have certain responsibilities. And, and I think the, or when Grandview came along, that was really our first entry into being in the housing business. And as far as I can tell, it's worked very well. Apparently, those condos turn over immediately, you know, when they're vacated. So here, so here we have an instance. And what I can't figure out, Todd, is why you went above 10%, but thank you. No, I'm thinking from a, from a business standpoint, you could have come and said. So here, to me, we're almost, although we're not physically taking possession of these units, we are requiring, how many, 40 units?
Up to 40.
42 units to go along with, with Grandview. And the only thing that I see that is any involvement is simply having somebody to keep a list. That's all you need. If you get the units, all you need is a list. They're talking about all these communities, and, you know, these different committees and everything else. I said, to me, you had made an offer for a certain amount of money to, as for amenities under whatever. And I said, look, if you gave somebody 100 bucks a month, they'd, they'd keep the list, you know?
It'll be more formal than that, but I think you're right.
Say what?
Once we get the agreement set up, it should be very easy to.
950 for me.
Yeah, or any amount of money and, and, you know, just have a list keeper. I myself don't do that kind of stuff. But, you know, I'm sure somebody would be glad to because you wouldn't have to go anywhere or do anything in particular. You just have to take the, and just certify that they had been a resident of Burlington for five years or whatever, or whatever the conditions you wanted to put. So I think it's really easy.
Thank you, Paul. Jack?
Yes, the recommendation that we would be making to Town Meeting, the five paragraphs are part of that recommendation?
Yes. So if there's any amendments to those, we welcome that conversation this evening.
I'm looking, I can't see within those five paragraphs where it says there is a preference on the affordable units for Burlington seniors.
So that is directly, what I didn't put in this list are, were things that were already in the bylaw. So in the bylaw, if you go to page 10, it specifically states, local senior preference shall be developed as local senior preference units.
Okay, yeah, my concern is, what if somebody wants to amend that part out? I would want my favorable recommendation to be withdrawn. So my favorable recommendation is based upon the condition that these affordable units have.
That's what we're voting on.
Well, it's not in the five paragraphs which are our recommendation to Town Meeting.
If you would like to reiterate it in a sixth paragraph, we can absolutely do that.
That sounds like a good idea, Jack.
So on the top of page eight, which is the fourth line of paragraph three, shall be part of an Affordable Housing Restriction Agreement, giving preference to Burlington seniors.
Okay, no problem.
Do you make it exclusive?
Thank you, Jack.
No, because, no, you get, you run afoul of some federal laws.
Thank you, Jack.
How about strong preference?
Well, preference is good enough. The other question I have, Todd. It's a question of the existing Tremont. Are they wood frame construction or are they?
Yeah, they're both.
And these will be these pressed fiberboard wood frame construction?
They're both, the building typology in this market is wood frame, yeah, with it, with it. But we are committing to the board to build that concrete and steel parking podium on which the building sits. So the garage is concrete and steel.
And then it's wood frame above that?
But it's very, very complicated engineering, all acoustics and everything's taken into.
Yeah, well.
Very stiff, quiet, safe, fully sprinkled building.
Once they're completed?
Once they're completed, yes. That's right. That's a real issue.
Yeah, it is. Okay.
Yes.
It has to be, no. Okay.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Some, in the earlier units, Jack, they didn't, not these units, but in previous multifamily dwellings, didn't sprinkle the attics, and that, that became a problem. And I guess they recognize the problem, and now they do.
They're required to.
Well, the ones that, of that construction that had some serious problems, they weren't.
I don't think we're, we have the authority to.
No, I was just curious, type of construction, you know, because some people.
Yeah, a little concerned.
Won't live in that construction.
Thank you. Okay.
That's it for me.
So I want to start by thanking you both for all this work and our staff as well. I also want to thank the zoning bylaw review committee because they've done a lot of work on this. As most of, most of you who know me know that I'm generally not in favor of increasing density and increasing housing in Burlington.
increasing density and increasing housing in Burlington, but I am very much in favor of this proposal. Because this is something that we have been asked for, for a long time, as Ernie alluded to, something that we were not able to provide before with any certainty that it would be affordable for Burlington seniors. So I think that this is a very unique and exciting opportunity. And I'm very happy that we can recommend to Town Meeting that this go forward. And I'm hopeful that it will be approved overwhelmingly so that Burlington, 42 Burlington seniors will have a fabulous place to live where they can walk to restaurants and shops and supermarkets. So I'm excited about it. Before I turn this over to the audience, there is some confusion sometimes about exactly what our vote means. So I, I wanted to just clarify that. That what the planning board is voting on tonight is simply a recommendation to Town Meeting. The planning board will indicate to Town Meeting if we recommend favorably or unfavorably, and Town Meeting makes the final decision about this amendment. The planning board's role in this process is to hold the public meeting. And through that public meeting process, everyone can learn, participate, and in work to improve the warrant that Town Meeting is considering. The planning board then makes its recommendation and sometimes, as in this case, recommends changes to the warrant. Those changes cannot expand the article, but they can clarify or restrict the article. And that's what we've done here. So before we vote, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question. Okay? Oh, yes? Okay, come on up.
Miss Ellis was.
You stayed seated for just a, a little longer than I thought. And I thought maybe you weren't going to come up.
I hesitated to see if anybody else had a comment.
Okay.
Shari Ellis, Town Meeting member, and also chair of the zoning bylaw review committee. And again, thanks go to everybody. We did work long and hard. We are a new committee. And we really took our role seriously to review the bylaws. And this is an amendment to the bylaws. And we wanted to make sure that clear, concise. And to Member Kelly's point about the local senior preference, that was loud and clear what we heard from this board, loud and clear what we hear from our fellow Town Meeting members. We don't necessarily want multifamily housing, but this proposal really does, you know, speak to that need. And one of the changes that we made from the warrant to the amendment that we would like to propose is the fact that pretty much by default, this will be senior affordable housing unless, however it is worded by, and through the Board of Selectmen, they would change it. So that was our attempt to hear the need for the senior housing. It's by default. Unless the Board of Selectmen opts to change this, which we've heard from the Board of Selectmen, that the senior housing is what they want as well. That is one of the clarifications we made, looking at the language here. So I just wanted to bring that up, that I know that it's, you know, it's really loud and clear. We've heard senior housing. Yeah, we wish it could be all 300 units, but that isn't going. So we got the 14%. And that's kind of thanks to them of, of increasing that. So that was our comment. I just wanted to let you guys know that, so.
And thank you for all your work.
Was your vote in recommendation by the zoning bylaw review committee?
Um, yes. We had a vote in favor of this proposal, 8-0-0. We also, also voted on a recommendation to, I'm not going to remember it. So hang on a second. Recommended that the Board of Selectmen form the committee to include representatives of relevant boards, towns, and committees to assist in the creation and implementation of the Affordable Housing Restriction Agreement. So that agreement isn't going to be finished by Town Meeting, isn't going to be started by Town Meeting. However, that being said, if the agreement is not complete, these folks don't get an occupancy permit.
Building permit.
Building permit. Sorry. Building permit. So even before the occupancy permit, building. I knew that was one or the other, and I knew I was going to screw that up. But anyway. So, you know, this agreement is critical.
There are protections, yes.
So, in other words, once, if Town Meeting hopefully favorably passes this, you know, the project goes forward. But the, before they can do anything, this agreement has to be done. So it's to our benefit and it's to their benefit.
And it's for our benefit as well.
That's usually how it works well. Okay, thank you, Shari.
And actually, Shari, you weren't wrong. They definitely won't get an occupancy permit.
You're right.
If they don't have a building built.
All right, so I'm in.
I like it this way better.
Thank you, Shari. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one. Kristin, you said, should we close the public meeting? And then you're going to amend what we have here? Okay.
Motion to close.
Can you make a change after the public hearing is closed?
It's just.
No, she's going to recite the motion.
The motion as written.
Okay.
I'm going to change the motion as written slightly, and I just. That's fine.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Ernie. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 7-0. Kristin, would, perhaps you could provide the language for us? So the first motion, or just the main motion, the, the rest doesn't change, to recommend favorably on the Northwest Park Plan Development District Amendment as advertised for the Planning Board hearing of June 20th, 2019, as further amended and included in the printed, print, printed warrant for the September 23rd, 2019 Town Meeting, and further amended by the zoning bylaw review committee at their meeting of September 11th, 2019, and submitted as an amended motion for the September 23rd, 2019 Town Meeting, as amended.
So moved.
As further amended. Okay, thank you, Kristin. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 7-0. And then do we have? That's it unless you just wanted to read through the one through five. I read through it earlier.
One through six.
One through six, sorry. No, it's still one through.
One through five.
It's still one through five and amended number three to add giving preference to Burlington seniors. Well, isn't that, that's, isn't that just part of what you, so we don't need to read them all now? No, I think we're all done. I just wanted to make sure you're, we're good. All right.
Can I make one comment?
Of course.
I appreciate that you recognized the work we did. But I'd be remiss that, you know, I sit here and, yeah, I take the thank yous. Christine Huggen in my office did a lot of work on this.
Thank you, Christine.
I'd like to recognize the work she did because they sit in the background, they don't get the recognition.
Thank you, Christine.
You just, you just did. Thank you.
Next time you should sit up here. Because you're prettier than these two anyway. All right. Let's, I think we're done.
Thank you very much.
This is fantastic. Thank you. I'm, we're very much looking forward to it. All right. We are now on item 7B, a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.10, restaurants of the zoning bylaw, 85 Middlesex Turnpike Burlington Mall, Rains International Massachusetts Incorporated, doing business as Guy.
Yuukaku?
Heykaku, Japanese barbecue restaurant. Thank you for helping me. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Attorney Mark Vaughn here tonight representing the applicant, Yuukaku. I keep mispronouncing it also, but.
Can you tell me, say that again? So I.
Yuukaku.
Yuukaku. Thank you.
With me is Ko Lei, who is the regional operations manager for Yuukaku. They have currently three other locations in Massachusetts, those being Brookline, Harvard Square, Cambridge, and a new location that they recently opened up in South Bay in Boston. I think that's all of, just a few weeks old. So they are a, a Japanese barbecue oriented company with locations throughout the country who have been looking to selectively locate here in Massachusetts. And this would be their, their first suburban location beyond the ones that I had mentioned to you. So they provide a unique dining experience. They provide designed-in-table roasters for customers to be able to cook individual cuts of food that are delivered by staff and instructions provided. And Ko can explain how that all works. But it's a very interactive dining experience, something that's very popular for small or large groups of people, but something that is really popular throughout the country. Each table has individual vented units that are underneath the table that address smoke and odor. So everything is, is vented appropriately in, in compliance with all state and, and local codes. So the concept originated in Japan, from what I understand, but has expanded into the United States. So the, the location that we're looking at locating is the Tire Battery Auto Building. This is the spot that's right next to.
We need to come up with a new name for that.
Call it, call it the Annex.
What is it called?
How about the Annex?
Village. That sounds so much better.
I gotta stop the TBA references here. But, but if you've been there recently, you've seen Cafe Nero that opened on the corner. This is the.
They opened already?
They did open, yeah. This is the.
They were in the dark this morning, though.
I know. This has not been a great day. But this is the space right next to that, to the left. That's where the, the restaurant would be.
To the left?
There's no outdoor seating proposed. It would be 102 seats, all interior seats. So the building is basically built, the storefront exists, and that's really the, the plan. So I think Ko can, maybe take a few minutes just to kind of talk about their, you know, dining experience and how they operate. That might be helpful for the board to hear. And we have a menu as well that she could pass around if you'd like to see.
Do you, would you like me to pass that around? Or?
Sure.
Sure.
Yes, thanks.
So in the menu, we offer a variety of raw meats. We have beef, poultry, seafood. And we also have instructions in the menu as to how long the cooking time for each item should be. But our staff also get trained really well on instructing our customers. As we're bringing out each item, we always instruct them on how long to cook each side of the meat. So in that sense, safety wise, we are always putting customers first. With the grilling table, in the grilling system in the middle of the table, we also instruct customers not to touch the area. We also have cust, we have food runner, busters, all very knowledgeable of these instructions. So we've been very safe for the last seven years in Massachusetts. I've been managing for Yuukaku for seven years since they opened. We have yet to have any incident of like, you know, hurting customers or anything along that line. And I know Burlington is growing a lot. And that's going to be really good for our brand as well, to bring it into a suburban area. Like Mark had mentioned, we have not gotten to that, that demographic of the suburban areas. We want to get there with Burlington.
Okay, great. Sounds very interesting. I'm looking forward to the menu making its way down here. Kristin, did you have anything you wanted to add to this? Oh, sorry. No, we, no, it's pretty straightforward from where we see it. And Mark has covered pretty much most of it. So no, no recommendations from us other than what's before you. Thank you. Jack, would you like to start us off?
Yes. Will all seats have access to a cooking surface?
Yes, correct.
So there's no bar or anything like that?
No bar.
No service bar?
No, there's not. I think they would be looking for a beer and wine license, Jack, but it would all be table service for the.
Yeah, so there's no bar where patrons would be seated that wouldn't have access to the cooking?
That's correct.
No, it's pretty straightforward, yeah.
So you'll, oh.
I'm fine. Thank you.
So you'll have like stations with people sitting around and cooking?
So it would just be a normal dining experience as you would go to like cheesecake or IHOP? It would literally just be like a table? But we have venting, ventilation connect to each table that customers get seated at?
Because every once in a while I have flashbacks. And there was a place in Boston many, many years ago that we went and we sat around a place. And as I recall, yeah, we got a spear or something and cooked the meat?
Yeah. Would that be hibachi?
Any hahas.
I can't remember that part of it.
Like a chef cooking for you?
You cook to yourself, right?
Yeah.
You cook to yourself, so not hibachi.
So you, no, this is not like hibachi, which is customers, we're promoting customers to cook for themselves because that's the experience that we offer. So there wouldn't be a chef cooking for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe?
Thank you. Do you want me to comment?
Yes, please.
So Board of Selectmen, there is no comment. Inspector Buildings is favorable, without comment. DPW Engineering, approved, approval as submitted. Hold on one second. That's, I'm sorry, that was building, that was the Building Department. Engineering is, the comments are the standard comments. And I'm sure you have a copy of those, right? Instead of me reading through the whole thing. It's, you're fine with that. Fire Department is favorable. And some comments, which I'm sure you have, all materials within the public right of way will comply with the town's standards set forth in the town of Burlington and Public. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the Engineering. So that's Public Works and Engineering. Okay, so. In relation to the street opening, utility connection rules and regulations, as-built plans should be submitted on my law. Do you have?
Yes.
All of those from the, from the Engineering Department and Department?
All acceptable.
Public Works, okay. Next one is the Fire Department, I'm sorry. And that's approved as submitted. And the last one is the Board of Health and their comments. Board Health has the following comments. Comments are, the only comments from Board of Health, do not change these recommendations or add any other comments.
They're, they're standard food related.
Yeah, they're, but they're not as many as they usually have, so.
Is it both sided?
No, no, it's not.
No, no, it's, it's, there's no.
I'm thinking they're missing something.
There's no construction. It's a standard internal food.
Right. So I'm actually going to read them because there's only two.
Right ahead.
All right. So the proposed food establishment must undergo a plan review. A plan review application shall be submitted and approved by the Board of Health prior to construction. Two, a new external grease interceptor and internal grease interceptor shall be installed for the purpose of food establishment. These grease interceptors shall be appropriately sized, installed in accordance with the Burlington Board of Health Grease Inceptor requirements for food establishments and state plumbing code. So those are the comments from the Board of Health Conservation. There are no comments. Police, no comments.
Okay.
All right.
Do you have comments?
No.
We're developing a United Nations, no, really, of different restaurants.
Yeah. It's like Epcot's on a radio. No, I'm excited. I think it's going to be a great addition down there. It'll be a lot, a lot of fun going down to that.
Thank you. The village.
Yeah.
Not the battery and auto store.
Right.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Joe. Bye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is, do you guys, will we be serving takeout? Is takeout a possibility at the restaurant? Or is it all, everything eat in?
It's all eat in.
Okay. So you wouldn't be looking for any parking spots for takeout or anything like that?
No, we wouldn't.
Okay. Nothing further, Madam Chair.
Bill?
Yeah, no comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ernie?
Just a few infamation if, if curiosity comments. You said you have six or seven other restaurants? Is that correct?
In Massachusetts, we have three other restaurants.
Three?
And in the US, we have about 45 restaurants.
Excuse me?
In the US.
No, just in, in Massachusetts? You have three other restaurants?
Yes.
Are they, where are they? Are they Boston? Where are they located?
One is located in Brookline, Massachusetts, Cambridge, and South Bay, which is border with Dorchester.
Yep. And so this is your first suburban location, really?
Correct, in Massachusetts.
Can I ask why you chose Burlington? Do you?
Um, I'm not too sure.
Okay, you were at the real estate.
Yeah.
Okay, understand.
I've been in touch with the.
I was, I was searching for a, for a compliment, you know?
It's an amazing town.
They, honestly, they, they want to be part of the, the atmosphere here that has developed. I mean, I, look, I mean, there's no question that the daytime population here in Burlington is such that it's, there's a lot of companies, the Millipores, the Oracles, whoever else that, that are here that are able to sustain, you know, a lunch and a, and a dining business that, you know, is just part of that energetic atmosphere that Simon's looking to create down at the mall, so.
Good. Thank you.
It's now.
Thank you.
Brookline, Cambridge, and Burlington.
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I'm looking forward to this. I think it'll be a fun dining experience. I actually did go to a restaurant similar to this when I was in England a couple of years ago, and it was a lot of fun. So I'm looking forward to it, and I wish you a lot of luck.
I have one additional question.
Yes.
The, the grease traps came up. In addition to the cooking on the tables, you have a kitchen too, I presume?
Yes, correct. We also have, yeah. We also have... Yeah.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question on this matter? Seeing no one, I think we're ready to close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing on this matter. Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero.
Motion to approve the request of Ryan's International Massachusetts Doing Business as Ga Yuukaku, Japanese BBQ, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero. Welcome. When do you expect to open?
Um, hopefully by the end of the year, hopefully.
Great, okay.
Well, actually, Ryan just tested me that. They're looking to open, hopefully in May.
May, okay.
Okay.
So it'll be that quickly, yeah.
All right.
They've already delayed it.
May is good, but December would have been better.
The aging me.
Good luck and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, just a quick comment on the Village in Cafe Nero, which we talked about. I drove by there recently, and they've got the umbrellas out there, and they were closed, but I was wondering if anybody's seen them, if they open up and they say Cafe Nero on them, and how we made a decision on that, did we qualify that to say no names on the umbrellas? I think we've done that before.
I'm pretty sure that in the decision, there is a condition that they can't have branded, anything branded outside other than the sign on the top through the Building Department.
That's true across Burlington. But I haven't seen them open yet.
So I think the umbrellas, I think, yeah.
Did they say something?
Yeah, I think they say Cafe Nero on them.
We'll have to take a drive-by when it's sunny. We'll see. Thank you.
Maybe you could just call them ahead of time and validate that.
Yeah, we can do that.
So they...
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Item D out of order.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are going to take Item D out of order. Item D is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.22.2. Solar energy system ground-mounted of the zoning bylaws. 50 Margaret Street Northeast Solar Services Doing Business as Revolution is the applicant. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Louis Arid. We're from Revolution. We're a Burlington company, solar installation headquartered here. We're here to apply for a special permit to install two ground-mounted solar tracking systems at the home of Francis and Amanda Gruder, 50 Margaret Street. Simply put, the solar tracking systems are the most efficient way to harness solar arrays, since they utilize the latest innovations to directly follow the sun as it tracks across the sky. And no matter what the season, it maximizes the electrical power that the panels can produce. This is a significant technological advantage to building-mounted or fixed-ground-mounted arrays.
So they can be mounted on top of buildings as well?
Uh, this... Panels can be mounted anywhere, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure if they could do that if they're moving, so thank you.
Oh, no, no, the tracker system is no.
Oh, no?
No.
Okay, so the tracker system is only for ground-mounted?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
Very well. As a matter of fact, in this property on this case, implementing a fixed system on his building is actually not very feasible because, again, if the trackers follow it, a 48-panel tracking system, two 24-panel systems, will actually generate as much power as approximately 76 to 80 fixed panels, even if they're fixed perfectly south, which they wouldn't be if they're on the building.
Because they move?
Yes, because they specifically follow the sun. Also, I made an error in my initial application where I said that the tracker can sometimes be approximately 22 feet. The manufacturer actually corrected me on this one. The array can never tilt more than 60 degrees, and so he explained using an isosceles triangle that that actually means that the height of this will be 20 feet and inches at most, maximum height. I just wondered, I just point out that they're also intelligent enough to detect high winds and foul weather, and it's actually a pretty cool system. It'll lay flat if the wind gets too high, or if they know snow's coming, which is actually pretty neat. And so the issue obviously at hand is whether or not it'll exceed the 20-foot maximum, and as I stated, it will barely, if at all. And we firmly believe that even with the stipulation, this will not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood, since the location of the trackers will probably not be visible to any butters within the area. I have some pictures of the proposed sites, but I didn't make copies for everybody. If you can pass it around.
We can share.
Did you see this?
So as you're passing those out, I'm very curious, so I have another question. So you said if it starts to snow, they lay flat, but wouldn't that collect the snow? Wouldn't they want to...
Well, once the snow is done, it'll actually tilt up a little bit, and the snow should slide right off.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. We actually have three trackers we built that you approved over in the Norbloom area.
Oh, yes, okay. So you're the same company that did those?
Yes, that's our backyard.
So why would they... Just a follow-up question to that. If they, after the snow, they go this way, the snow falls off. Why don't they just go this way so the snow never falls on them, and then they go back down when the snow's down?
Snow usually comes with a stormy condition. I think it's the wind that drives the decision more than anything else.
So they don't want it this way?
Right. So even if it's a very heavy rain-ish, lays flat. There's a little, I forget what you call it, the little windmill thing at the top of the array.
That's good enough.
And that's what...
A little windmill thing.
So there's a little windmill thing on it, and that's what determines the weather conditions?
It also is in constant communication with the control center. So it's actually...
Where's the control center?
The manufacturer of the system actually runs it. I don't know where it's specifically located.
So it monitors the weather, and if it's windy, it does the same thing, it lays flat? And how far off of the ground is laying flat?
Actually, hold on. It should be part of the packet that I sent. Laying flat would be maximum height of... Excuse me?
Half a turn to an inch.
12 feet? Laying flat maximum height would be approximately 10 feet off the ground.
Okay. Are these identical to the units that are installed over there on Fort Ave?
Absolutely. With one caveat, the panels that this customer chose are all black, whereas the panels that were in use in the Norbloom set are...
Blue?
No, they're... They have lines.
Okay.
These are the expensive panels.
Okay, Kristen?
Kristen? So we do not have a decision in front of you, but this is one of our first ground-mounted residential installations, so we just really need some guidance as to where you kind of want to start with these. They are allowed. We recently submitted a... We recently passed an amendment to allow ground-mounted in residential, but to come here for a special permit. This site itself, it's a site that actually is a fairly large site. There's a lot of vegetation around it. So our recommendations are certainly to... I mean, they obviously need sun, so they need to be in an open area, but also the impacts of the ground-mounted, we want to make sure are felt within the site, not to the neighbors next door. So we just want to make sure that there isn't any additional clearing in the buffer between this house on Margaret Street to this house. However, the Margaret Street houses are pretty far below toward Margaret Street. And then also on the other side for Travers Lane, which I notice there's some Travers Lane residents here. But overall, based on the site and based on where they're located, I don't think many of us are ever going to drive by them and see them, but you want to make sure, based on their location, that that is the case from the applicant. And then just looking for some direction from the board as to some other things we might want to be considering within the decision, and that's where we are. So we're... We don't have an objection, but we're just trying to look for some feedback to kind of craft the decision.
If I may address your issue, first of all, we cited them specifically with that in mind, how, what's the least possible impact from a visibility standpoint from the neighborhood? They're obviously can be moved a few feet in either direction, but where the posts are on the photographs are pretty much, I think, the optimum location to put these things for, so that no one but the homeowner will see them.
Okay. Unless there are objections from the board, I would like to give the neighbors the chance to speak before we speak.
Can I do this?
Okay, sorry.
I just want to do this.
Yes, we'll take department comments, and then we'll hear from neighbors.
Sure. So Board of Selectmen, no comment. Inspector Buildings is unfavorable. Yes, I believe he provided the definition of a front yard and said he didn't want anything in the front yard.
Well, let's hear what he says.
Yeah, what?
I want you to tell us what he said.
What'd he say?
Just says approval with the following recommendations, no unapproval. Building Department does not approve the... Does not approve the approval of these two solar arrays panels for the following. Per BZL Article 10, Section 10.9.1, ground-mounted solar energy systems in any and all positions shall adhere to all setbacks and are prohibited from the front yard of any subject property. Per BZL Article 2, Section 2.25.1, yard front, an open space extending across the full width of the lot and lying between the front lot line and the line parallel to the front lot line that touches the nearest point of the building. Per BZL Article 5, Section 5.1.3.3, in RRO districts, no accessory use or uses shall occupy part of the required front or side yards and not more than 20 feet... I'm sorry, more than 20% of the rear yard, other than required off-street pocket. Four, per BZL Article 5, Section 5.1.3.5, in RRO districts, no accessory building shall be more than 20 feet in height. Applicant states the height could be 22 feet above the grade. That's the Building Department. Engineering is favorable. Police, no comment. Fire Department is favorable, but there is an issue about some detail that was done that's not being... There's a letter here saying that they had never paid a necessary detail that was done.
We had not.
The owners need to pay for a fire detail?
Right.
It's an outstanding invoice that they would like to make sure gets paid.
Okay.
And Board of Health is favorable. Concom has no comments.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to hand it over to the board, but I know there are neighbors here that want to speak, and I thought it might be to our benefit to hear what they have to say before we take our stab at it. So if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this matter, please come And you can sit or stand as you prefer, but please give your name and address for the record. Yes, hi, Cindy McNamara, 7 Travers Lane.
Dennis McNamara, 7 Travers Lane. And I'd say one thing that I have a question for.
Sure.
The system is not familiar as much as anybody is.
Can you talk into the microphone, please? I can hear you.
I'm not familiar with solar systems as anyone else is, but the unit that you have, I'm not familiar with at all. My only concern from where we live is any kind of noise, any buzzing, humming.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you, sir, if you're speaking to the microphone.
Is this working? All right, I got to get right here, okay. All right. So I'm sorry, but the thing is, any noise is what I'm concerned about. I won't be seeing them, so it doesn't bother me. But the thing is that I know that with your solar panels, you get the sunlight, you get direct current, and then from direct current, you have to use an inverter to convert it to alternating current. And I've been told that some inverters can be noisy. So that's my concern. That's the only concern I have. That's the only question I have.
Oh, no, well, I'll address the mechanism itself does have a bit of a thing. I think it's 15 decibels at most. You have to be standing...
Would you get closer to the microphone also? Thank you.
The mechanism itself, the dual-axis transfer that actually rotates the device, does, I think it's 15 decibels maximum, you have to be really be standing within 15 or 20 feet of it to even hear it. As far as the inverters go, we use solar edge inverters. They're pretty much the top of the line. They don't give any sound off at all that I'm aware of.
That's all I got. That's all I have. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Could I see that picture?
Oh, I wish I brought it.
Sure.
Which one? That was handed out, just on the location of them.
Oh.
I'm not sure it shows it here.
In the post...
There's a pad, I think he mentioned it's like two pads.
Do you like this?
There were two wooden posts that are in the ground that show where we're...
You can come and take that if you'd like.
Oh, great. I wish I brought more.
So where is your home in relation to this property?
Shows them right here.
They're on Travers Lane.
Little colored school. We're about 30, 50 feet away from property lines. We're about 50 feet, 30 to 50 feet away from each other.
Our backyard...
Your backyard?
Our backyard butts, well, down the hill.
They're front.
You're down the...
The property line doesn't butt there, but it... We're, as he said, close. We're...
Okay, thank you.
The posts here, we put them around, are approximately where we were.
So looking at the lot, where we are the closest. I know you have this, so that is my closest. Thank you.
Yes, yep.
Charlie Shady, Stone Rock or something?
Shamrock, he's on Shamrock.
My concern wasn't really so much the height of it, it was more the location of them, and as to Dennis's point, just a noise issue. But you're saying the distance, we won't hear it, and obviously, we're not going to visually see it.
Sure.
Will there be any tree removal in order to install these?
No, we don't plan on any tree removal.
You're not removing any trees, okay.
That's part of the site thing. If we do have to move the sites, that may, that issue may have to be readdressed, but...
So I will note that because of the Building Inspector's comment, we do need to address that. So just, I guess I would just, anyone who's watching and/or here, based on that we... They can't have them in the front yard. If that's the case, and that's the way they're going to be measured, they might need to move them. So just keep appraised of the situation. That's one of the reasons why we're not voting tonight, just to try to allow the applicant to resolve that issue, but I don't want you to go away thinking like they're absolutely going to be in this location.
So that would raise a question, if in fact, they do need to move them and go through that process, would it be re-notified?
No.
You would not, but we...
So that's something I follow up on that, in fact, that...
You'll hear that it'll be continued to the meeting of October 3rd.
Oh, okay.
So October 3rd would be the next time. If you leave your name and number with our office or here with Liz now...
I'll do that.
We can notify you if for some reason they're not going to be at that meeting, and they haven't resolved the issue, but we certainly can contact you, but you won't get a new notice.
I can't, just as a side comment, I can't imagine after the years that it took to build the house and all, we went through listening and the blasting for years, it was whatever, that there'd be many more trees that could even be taken down.
I think you'd be pleasantly surprised, this construction process is relatively modular. In other words, the, it's a, it's a concrete pad, we dig a hole, we put the pad in, we settle it, and then we mount the equipment to it. So it's actually very quick, painless way to put a system in.
Margaret Street ends in their yard. It's a driveway, basically.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. You can write your name and contact information in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, then I'm going to turn this over to the board for comment. Ernie, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, this is a little bit of a weird one, obviously, the front yard is not our decision, the bill, it's the Building Inspector's decision, but if I recall, I think Margaret Street itself ended at those two, remember those two granite posts that were standing at the entrance that when they were going to add two or three houses back in here, we were going to have to move the posts so the fire trucks can get through and more? Because it looks like, it looks like it's a, how do you, I don't know, that's a Building Inspector's problem to determine frontage when your driveway is four hundred feet long or whatever the heck it might be here.
Well, when you have frontage, and it's a driveway and not a roadway, and are you defining frontage the same way?
Yeah, how do you define?
It's a very good question, that needs to be resolved.
I don't know, it obviously needs some study and some...
Yeah, I don't think we're going to be able to answer that one tonight.
Other than that, obviously, if they're, if they're not visible from any budding properties, that was our concern when we put this in.
Right.
And they're...
I'm sorry, I think they got a conversation going on, maybe wait.
Should we wait? Do you want me to keep going?
The applicant, I mean.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. And there's no, if it's true they're only fifteen dB, the sound is very, very low, doesn't doesn't seem like it's going to bother anybody, and that's what the special permit is for, I believe.
No private meetings.
Sorry, I gave them my card just in case they wanted to see the ones that we have already installed.
All right, thank you, Ernie.
I'm all set.
Do you have anything else?
I'm all set, really, I just got to iron out the...
Okay. Bill?
Thank you, ma'am chair, a couple of things, I'm just looking at the site plan here, and it looks like there's, there's two houses on the property, so maybe that's...
I think it's a house and a garage, perhaps?
Well, it says, it says one-story, it's a one-story house there, and then it's got the major house over there, it's got two car garages there and three on the other side, so it's got to be...
That's a big house.
Well, it looks like two houses then, so I wonder if it's, the property was split at some point?
Is it two houses, or is one of them a garage?
He's looking, he's looking.
Did someone tell us?
There has to be another house, because there's three, three garages in the main house, and there's two on the other, so it can't be, it can't be a house and garage, because then it's five.
So the property owner is not here?
No.
Oh, okay. That's the house. I thought they might be property owners.
Well, that's the house, but then this is, so it's got three car garages here, in the house.
And then another garage.
Two, it's got two there, so it's got five.
Five.
Got five, it's two bays, so it's three and two, and then it's, you know, so I'm just, and this describes it as a one-story house, so...
That's a mistake in the plan, it's another garage.
Yeah.
Or it isn't.
I know the property is owned by one person, but other than that, I don't know.
Yeah, but is it a second house? Have you been in it, or?
No, I haven't.
Okay. So maybe that's something the Building Inspector could check out to the plan, because, you know, people that draw these, they don't need to make mistakes, they actually certify them. So can we have that as an action to validate that it's, you know, a garage and not, not a house? It does look like a house, probably the size of my house.
I thought it was originally going to be a basketball court, truthfully, but I don't know.
I mean, the square foot, it's like a ten, over ten thousand square foot house.
No, 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 I'm talking about the little house, the little house, second house. Probably two thousand square feet.
Not sure if that's included or not.
No, okay, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm communicating correctly here, so...
I understand what you're saying, you just want to make sure it's not a second house.
Yeah, and then it wasn't a lot, because then it makes a difference where these things are placed with their front yard, but if it's a, if the lot goes, you know, somewhere else, then I'm not sure, I don't know, a variance or something. And then my second question is with regard to one of the documents that talks about the Sun Power residential panel, and if you say it's exactly like the one over on Fourth Ave, I think it is, that's, looks more industrial, right, the twenty feet high and this three of them, so what's, the only difference between the residential and the industrial one is just the black color, is that correct?
That's exactly correct. I think the manufacturer of the panels are, is Panasonic, and the Nordblum said this is a Sun Power panel, but from an aesthetic standpoint, it's, the Sun Power panel is all black.
And just to my benefit, do you have other residential ones anywhere around that you've put up?
Other trackers, yes. The nearest one to us, I believe, is Beverly.
Beverly? Oh, that was, was that the one that, that they had the issue with a couple of years ago?
It's all over the newspapers.
The front yard, Josh was telling me, yeah.
That made the Channel Four news and...
Yep, thank you, ma'am chair.
Our install was...
Yeah, I think I need a sidewalk, because I know, you said you can't see it, and if we move it in the backyard, and you can't see it today, but, you know, in a couple of, couple of weeks, we'll be able to see what that looks like from the neighbors, so I think that's important, because these are, if anyone's been by Fourth Ave, these are huge, they're huge.
Could you submit a photo of another installation?
Yes.
A residential installation that would look like this residential in the interim?
I think a sidewalk is a good idea, too. This is the first time we've done this, and we need to understand.
Yeah, and I think for residential, I, I'm not sure with the rest of the board, but it was just me personally, I wasn't envisioning having the industrial-sized solar panels that are on Fourth Ave to be in someone's backyard.
That's, that's actually what was my, one of my questions, you know, so what, yeah, I know you had said that these will provide as much energy as, you know, and then you stated something else.
Baby panels.
Forty-eight square feet, as much as ninety square feet of fixed, or something like that.
Something along those lines. So is this more than what they'll, this will be more than sufficient for their house, or? I don't believe, actually, I think it'll, it'll come close to providing the power that they need, but I don't think it exceeds it. I can get that information for you as well, if you need. This, the idea is that if you, if you, a fixed ground mount is typically at due south, at thirty degrees angle, and in that scenario versus a tracker that follows the sun, a twenty-four-panel tracker is equivalent to a thirty-eight-panel fixed system, and then if you put it on a building which is not due south and not thirty degrees, then you have to add, you have to do more math to add even more panels to get the same amount of effective energy from it. The tracking is just that much more efficient. And I'm sorry, it does, it does have an industrial look to it.
I think what we're getting at is how, how large is an array, or does it, do they need in order to service their needs just of the house, just of this house, not of, not selling it back to the grid?
Oh, okay.
I think it's a pretty big house, probably need a lot.
Yeah.
Ten thousand square feet.
Huge house, yeah.
That, that doesn't, you know, for me, I don't...
Right. It's not what we expected.
You have to look at why they, yeah, or they maybe need one, you know, two, they could use three, you know, it's, it's something that we need to decide there.
Doing solar panels to decrease their footprint, and they're increasing the footprint.
Small house. You're kind of working against yourself. Well, I used to say in the Board of Appeals, you're creating your own hardship.
You are talking about a lot that's like four and a half acres.
Yes.
Yes, and we could have a lot of houses on, yeah. Well, you don't have a street.
My question was...
Yeah, you can't put...
Joe? Do you have any questions?
No, that was, that was my question, actually.
Paul, do you have any questions?
No, just, it was remarkable, on Tuesday, I was up in Maine, we were heading out of Portland North, and it was kind of rural, and I saw this hill. It looked really big to me, it was as high as, it must have been fifteen feet, and you couldn't see the house, there was just trees and so forth, but, and it was on a substantial post or whatever, but I said, I don't think I'd want something like that anywhere near my neighborhood. It was the first one I ever seen, it was big, and it was black, I could see that much of it. I assumed it moved and so forth.
They make sixty-panel trackers, that's a twenty-four-panel tracker, sixty panels is huge, yes.
Yeah, it was, I said, wow. And then I saw this, and I said, well, it's here.
Yes.
I want to be noticed if there's going to be one in my neighborhood.
Jack?
Yeah, when you were reading from the Building Inspector, was he comparing this to an accessory building? Because it was something about an accessory building height, and I didn't quite figure it out.
Well, he was looking at that, ma'am chair, I think what I'd look for, you know, this is, this is the proposal, this is the application, and you probably have other models, right? You're not like, you don't have this one model, other, other, other ones that are, I would say more maybe appropriate if you were to put it in a residential versus a twenty-four-footed? You have a fifteen footer, or a ten footer, or eight footer, or?
There is a twenty-panel model that we also have installed, and I can get pictures of that, it's not appreciably smaller, it just takes off the top row, so you only wind up saving two feet.
And I think we had a person come to us with a flower-shaped one, or something like that.
Yes, I've seen those, they're not as efficient, unfortunately, because the panels are, they, they had to put the cells in to fit the panels, but it's a very neat little device in the sense that it closes up at night.
Right.
And it cleans itself off, and the process of it opens up in the morning, it's just very, it's very low power. This particular unit will be operating in a seven-point-six kilowatt system, those sunflowers are half that power, and they're comparably priced, so it's, it's just not technologically as efficient.
Jack, did you have any other questions?
Yes, you said this is automatically controlled remotely?
Yeah, there's a remote monitoring system that monitors for inclement weather, and there's also a local monitoring system that can detect wind speed, that can drop, so if they know weather's coming, it's dropping.
All right, so that's remotely controlled by the internet, or cellphone, or what?
It's internet, yes, it's hard.
Internet, so if there's an internet failure, you can't...
Yes, sir, I would say that's true.
Is there any local override that the homeowner can act to put it in a safe position, or will it, in the event of a failure, it's got its own power, I presume, will it go to a safe mode?
Yeah, yeah, in the event of a power failure, it'll, it'll immediately drop on its own, that's, that's, that's a rapid shutdown condition.
So it has enough battery power onboard to start at the safe zone. High-tension wires go through there, where is this relative to the Edison easement?
I don't think it's anywhere near any high-tension wires, I'll have to look at that.
Okay.
This is, this is a hill, I think the, I think the wires run parallel to the hill, but I don't think they run over the hill. Cross over the hill.
The power, they're further toward Wind Street.
Further towards Wind Street?
For the Wind Street-Center Street intersection?
Well, it goes across Center Street.
Yeah.
Across this big property, down, crossing Wind Street.
Right.
The Edison, so I don't know where this property is relative to...
To the left and up the hill.
It's usually a three-hundred-foot wide easement you've got there, and you're not supposed to put any permanent structures under it, so I just, and the other thing, if this is that high, it could, I know pine trees, if they're within a certain dis, arcs can come.
Okay.
And I don't know, but so, that'd be, this thing will go no more than sixty degrees, it won't, it'll never turn straight up?
No, it cannot go straight up.
Sixty degrees is the maximum?
Yes. That's actually the spec sheet in the plan set, actually, has that corroborated.
You gave me too much information, so I couldn't read it all.
Can happen.
Okay, those cover my questions for now, thank you.
Clearly, we're not going to be able to make a decision on this tonight, it seems that we have a lot to learn still. I, I share Bill's concern in that this is not what we anticipated when we put this forward, it's much more industrial and larger than we expected to see in a residential area. I also would say that if the location, if a change in location were to result in removing trees, I would probably have a very hard time getting onboard, because that also seems kind of counterintuitive, cut down trees so that you can get solar power.
Absolutely.
So I'm very concerned about that if the location ends up changing, I don't want to see a removal of a lot of trees, just because it's not a good idea, and also because then it would reduce the buffer and it may become visible to neighbors. So those are some of the things we have to consider, but I don't think we're going to do anything else with this tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on this matter? Okay, there is not, did you have a question, Ernie?
Yeah, one more thing, is there any way that you can take pictures from the nearest residences towards these to show us what the view would be towards it, if you, especially if you have to move it, and what kind of trees, were they deciduous or evergreens, you know?
I think it's a mix of trees, I'd have to, I'd have to see how to do that. The only way to really be able to do it accurately would be to put a post like twenty feet high.
A balloon, and then you can go to the neighbors and see if you can see the balloon.
That's absolutely possible, we can do that.
Because other than that, if they're, I mean...
We want to know if the neighbors can see it.
This is a unique case, it's not a half-acre lot, it's crazy.
Right, it's very different.
As long as it's the only people that can see it, other people live in the house?
Right. I think the balloon might be a great idea, because then we can go to the neighboring properties and see if they can see it.
Or even, well, it's only twenty-two feet high, so you could just put a big four-by- two-by-twelve or something in the air, painted color, you could see it.
I thought a balloon would be easier than two-by-four, but what do I know?
Balloons tend to move around.
Well, we have a bucket truck.
Balloons are trickier than you think.
Oh, okay.
Bucket truck, we could have somebody stand, we could park a bucket truck that high and just walk around the neighborhood.
I think, I think, you know, where I've got my house, and, you know, I've got woods behind it, and it's a combination of deciduous and...
Yeah, evergreens, right, yeah, yeah.
And come October, after October, because we had the snow October with...
That's how you know that...
Then I can't, I can't see my neighbor today.
Yeah.
From the house, so I'm going to say it's, you know, it's two hundred feet back, and, you know, I clear about a hundred feet of it, so, you know, in October, I can see right into my neighbor, so I know that it's stuck in seventy, eighty feet away, but when leaves drop.
I think they were talking to the property line, yeah, because this house is, yeah.
Yeah, so here's where they are, and they'd have to go see through the house, but if it's behind there, so I, you know, you can't tell right now.
We're not going to resolve this tonight, I do think it might make sense to set up a site visit, but why don't we take that under consideration, and we can set something up with you.
Can I ask a question regarding the concern about nothing in the front yard? My understanding of that is basically because the front yard is typically visible to the neighborhood, is that really the main...
That was, I think that was the intent at the time.
All right, very well, just want to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, I think because of Beverly thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's not something, they can't get a variance to deviate from that.
No, because it's a use, it's a use.
I don't, my gut is no, but I'd have to look at it, I'd...
We'll take that offline.
It's our first, so, our first application, we're just taking off and figuring it out.
I'm looking to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of October third, 2019, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained, seven zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving backwards to item seven C, a public hearing, an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point seven point fifteen, antennas other than satellite dish antennas for the purpose of private reception of telecommunications signals, which antennas do not exceed twelve feet in height above the ground or twelve feet above the roof of a building on which they are mounted, of the Northwest Park Plan Development District zoning bylaw, fifty-three Third Avenue, Chelco Partnership doing businesses Verizon Wireless as the applicant.
Oops, sorry about that.
Evening, ma'am chair.
Thank you for your patience.
Hello?
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Carl Garing, on behalf of Verizon Wireless.
It's on, but you have to speak right into it for it to work.
Or you can sit.
Yes.
Thanks, Elizabeth. And I am joined this evening by Elizabeth Fallon.
Okay, thank you.
Representing Verizon Wireless's real estate department, and Matthew Tilden, our professional engineer with the Dewberry Engineering Company, the roof of Wegmans, and the roof of Wegmans. An application, submitted an application that consists of a town form, special permit form, a narrative, construction drawings, which I have here, photo simulations, radio frequency engineer's affidavit, a structural letter where the Dewberry Company has analyzed this roof for its ability to support the equipment that's proposed, and it does indeed pass, and then our FCC licenses, which we put in there to put on the record that we are an FCC licensee, federal, early licensed wireless service provider. I want to jump quickly to the plots that are in the RF report. I know you're familiar with these, because you've had other wireless applications before here. You may wonder, why do we need this site? We're already on this tower in the Northwest Park, there's a cell tower a half mile away.
Good question.
You, some of you may be Verizon Wireless customers yourselves, and you could say, well, I made a call down there this afternoon, I didn't have a problem, what's the problem? The problem is, and what this, this colorful plot tries to demonstrate, is there's a phenomenon in our industry called footprint shrinkage, where there's a finite amount of power, we're licensed by the federal government, a radio station license, but we're two-way radio, so we broadcast out, and I've heard the analogy, which is a pretty good one, that we are like a low-powered college radio station, where the signal doesn't go very far, but we are two-way radio, we have to hear back from the user, the person with the little handheld device. We're limited by the amount of power we can give off, and the frequency we broadcast on, and there's this phenomenon where the more people that get on the line off a particular cell site, the foot, there's only a finite amount of power to give off and supply to everyone, the footprint starts to shrink down, so that now, all of a sudden, if you're on the periphery of a site, you lose the call, or you can't make a call, or if you're downloading a document, it stops and you can't get back on. That's a phenomenon that if you haven't heard of it before, you're going to hear more of that. That's coming, where we, it's called densification, where we're, all the carriers, not just Verizon Wireless, but all the carriers are looking to densify their networks and add more sites. And they're often lower than back in the day when, when I first got in this business, we always wanted 150-foot towers everywhere. Now there are much lower sites like we are here because we're trying to fill in a very specific pocket.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So from what you're saying, are you telling us that in that area, there are, that this is becoming a problem, that this is, there are dead spots?
Absolutely.
Because I know, I've never had that problem there. I know every time I drive down, what street is that? Where you take a right, Adams Street, heading into Lexington, the call drops as soon as I drive across the border into Lexington for, you know, about four blocks.
What carrier do you have?
It doesn't matter because it drops with other people's phones, too. They have no cell coverage in Lexington because they don't want towers. But anyway, I've never had that issue anywhere in Burlington.
Okay, and so that's a phenomenon where you are, say, lucky that you would have called. It depends on network traffic and how much other users are on the line. And then you have the traffic along Route 3 that exacerbates that. If there's all of a sudden a traffic jam and people are backed up, they're calling and I'm late for work and so forth, they're using up bandwidth from these towers. So now that people in the Northwest Business Park will drop calls. I mean, we wouldn't, we get this a lot when we want to build a new cellphone tower. I, my phone works fine when you need this. We do, I can guarantee you, we don't do this to keep in practice for when we really need a site. We're spending a lot of money here because we need a site and yet, and the network engineers have determined, we've got a problem in the vicinity of Wegmans, which is going to benefit that whole region. So we're still going to need to stay on this tower we're on now? This is not replacing any of these sites, this is in addition to. So what this graph shows is right now, when you're making a call, this is the subject property here, when you're making a call in this vicinity, the signal's coming off of either this, this tower up here, or you can see there's a site over here on 24 Northeast Executive Park, that signal's coming across this way. Even some of this purple's coming from way over here at 67 South Bedford Street, but this one here at 31 North Avenue is primarily covering down. And what happens is in times of high network traffic and high network demand, this site can't handle it all and this footprint starts to shrink. And then people over here are dropping calls, not able to make a call, losing coverage and so forth. And that's not just, it may be more prevalent with downloading data and so forth. It used to be, back in the day when cellphones were new, it was just making a call. You know, and back in the day, they were analog, it was an analog signal and just making a call was good enough. Then it became digital, then it became that plus all sorts of other things, downloading documents, texting, and so on and so forth. This is not just something that, whether you folks are wireless users or not, or enamored with wireless, it's an undeniable fact that our society as a whole is more and more becoming and has become more and more enamored with wireless connectivity, their wireless devices. And I will quote from Mr. Raymond in an earlier proceeding, quote, "Everyone has a cellphone now."
Yeah, they do. Except me.
And, and so when I heard that Nord Blum discussing, shall I wait for?
It's really cold. I tried to turn it up. I'm sorry.
Should I wait for the other gentleman?
No, you can keep going.
Okay. When I heard of Nord Blum's proposed bylaw amendment for senior housing, I thought, you know, this is going to benefit them. And I have, I chatted up the Nord Blum folks in the back. We also had to get their permission as the underlying landowner and Wegmans' permissions to do this, of course. And I said, you know, this is going to benefit your proposed development because I have relatives in their 80s who are on their iPads, on their iPhones, texting to their grandchildren and so forth. This is not just a young person's thing. I mean, this is everyone now. So this is going to benefit, and then businesses, commercial activity, small home-based businesses, public safety, this is a public safety and convenience thing, a convenience for everyone. And it's basically, we look at it as infrastructure that we're providing to the park here at no cost to the town or to Nord Blum, that we're providing this. So it's a tremendous benefit, really, with very little even noticeable impact in the sense that we're proposing a stealth installation. So the, this, this chart down here, this shows the existing conditions, and this chart down here, this green represents what this subject property would do. And you can see it's just a small blob because this is a low-height installation. You know, we don't want to be too high here because that would overshadow and start to interfere with some of the surrounding sites. We're purposely designing a very targeted area to cover, to rectify this, what we call capacity issue, where there are problems with downloads of calls and so forth, so that this main tower can still cover the highway, this proposed site will cover the vicinity of Wegmans and so forth. So that, that's the gist of why we need that site. Now, as the board is also aware, and it's probably heard from other applicants, under federal law, there's this whole thing, well, discussion of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions is off the table, we're not allowed to discuss that. Okay, that may be the law. However, I understand as a human myself and as a person that there are concerns. So what I've done is the, there's, in paragraph 15 of the RF report, they made a statement, Verizon operates in full compliance, all FCC guidelines and so forth. That's great, but I asked that we show some math behind that, and not from Verizon, I don't ask, I'm not asking them to certify themselves, but from an independent consultant, which is the same one that wrote the RF report. What is the level of emissions on this? Because people have, the board may have concerns, people in the audience may have concerns. So without waiving our protections under federal law, we've commissioned a report that analyzed that. And the gist of it is that the federal guidelines, say if up here, they determine this is the level of RF exposure that's hazardous, then the Fed set a limit of 10 times below that of what they call the occupational limit for people in the industry who work around antennas and climb towers and so forth. They say this is the limit, this, it's unsafe, we're going to go 10 times below that for people that work in the industry. Then they go five times below that for members of the public. Our report will show that, our analysis of the site is we're five times below that, we're about a little under 20%, 20% of the public limit. So this is so far below, it's a complete non-issue, and I'm submitting that so that it's just on the record that, that's something that was not required in the bylaw, but I'm doing that as a courtesy to the board and the courtesy of members of the public.
Is that just for this proposed tower or is it for all?
Yeah, this installation, every installation is analyzed individually, so this particular installation.
So this, so this may be less than what you would have installed somewhere else?
Uh, yeah, could be, or could be more. I mean, it's just, but the gist of it is that, you know, limit up here, 10 times below is occupational, five times below that is public, we're five times below that. We're, so basically, if we're at 20%, it's 19% and change, so call it 20%. If this installation's at 20%, what that tells me is you could have five other carriers on this roof and you'd still be compliant. And that's an unreasonable number because there aren't five other licensees in the market anymore. So it's, I'm stating that so that, to reassure the board and anyone listening, this is, the RF's a non-issue, there's more RF given off by your phone. What we're providing is enhanced service, enhanced connectivity that will benefit the community. It's basically infrastructure that we're providing. And so the, the plans then, we are proposing the so-called stealth canisters. And I just want to quickly show you these photos before I get into the details of the plans, because we made some last-minute changes, which I'm going to explain and stipulate to and respectfully ask that you accept them, that, but the gist of this, these photos won't change, that basically, we're proposing what we call stealth installation, stealth canister. So when you have a cell tower, let's say this is a tower, and the antennas are all together, there's usually an equilateral triangle that, so you have one sector or face facing one direction, then 100 degrees, 120 degrees apart, another direction, then 120 degrees apart, the other, so that way you cover 360 degrees. When you're on the roof of a building, you can't do that, although I have seen that. There are some oddball cases where you see a little mini tower on a roof. It's not practical typically because you have to shoot over, you know, the edge of the roof. So what they do instead is they split the sectors up. The A sector goes over here somewhere, the B sector, and shooting that direction, the B sector goes over there, shooting that direction, and the G sector this way. So you still get the 360-degree coverage, but they're not all clumped together, they're spread out. And that's what we're proposing here. And these, and then there's.
Don't try to make a call from the middle of the roof.
Then you're probably coming off that tower of the street. Yeah.
Joe just said to everybody.
That's why there are three. That's why you have three.
So we always have three sectors. Not always, but typically. And typically, when it's a cell tower, you know, back in the day, you see those triangles up there, they usually have four antennas per sector for a total of 12. Or I even saw, I've even seen, you know, 18 antennas, three sectors of six each. Well, here, we're only proposing three antennas, three sectors, but only three antennas. Okay? And that plays into, I'm going to get to line by line the building inspector's comments, but one of his comments was minimize the number of antennas. We're at the bare minimum here, we're at three. You know, normally we'd like to have 12 or nine, you know, it's always a multiple of three, we're at three, one pointing this way, one pointing that way, one pointing that way. And then what we're proposing in harmony with your bylaw is what they call stealth. So there's a lot of installations where the antenna is just on a tripod, on a framework, and there it is, out in the open, you know. We're proposing to enclose this in a canister so that from the ground, you wouldn't even be able to figure out what it, I mean, you'll all know because you're looking at this and hopefully approving it, but someone, a member of the public looking up there, they'll just see what looks like this roof vent or something. This is not an un.
A little chimney vent or a smokestack.
Yeah, and, and we've done these, and there are all kinds of different ways to do that. We've done fake, what we call faux chimneys. And you remember back in the 60s and 70s, they had, you had like the fake brick, you know, fake stick-on brick and everything? The stealth these days has come so far beyond that, that if you are on the ground looking up one of these, I've done these historic buildings, roofs on stealth faux chimney installations on historic buildings in historic districts, and you can't tell the difference looking back at that thing. They've come so far with the technology and the fiberglass and everything that it looks like real brick. Well, we didn't think that would be appropriate for the Wegmans building because it's a modern building. To have a brick chimney up there would look weird, like what's that doing up there? But these, these canisters are something that, and actually, if you look at this, this, this is part of the building. I don't know what that thing is, it's some kind of a vent or something. So what, and then here's what we're proposing over here, it just looks like another one of those.
How tall is it?
That one, I don't know. Ours are.
That's a generator.
Is that a generator?
Uh, hold on a second.
But ours, and I'm going to get into that with the plans, because that'll lead into a plan change I'm making. But, but the, but basically, we have the, we've split the three sectors of these three canisters, and these photos, which you all have in your package, close-up versions, you know, the Dewberry Company pointed it out here, you know, with a little arrow so you can see where to look. I, I wasn't involved in the production of these. When I order these, like say for a new tower or even a roof installation like this, I like to leave that off. And you know those, those cartoons in the children's magazine, the dentist office, where you have these two pictures side by side and you're supposed to go back and forth and try to figure out what changed? I prefer not to have that on there and let the board try to figure out what's changed. Now, if they say, I can't find it, it's like, exactly, you just made my point for me, you know, it's, you're not going to notice the thing. So we're proposing these real simple little canisters up on the roof that, once they're up there, nobody's going to even know what that is. And that's what we call stealth, and that's how we get the coverage, the 360-degree coverage is by splitting them up. Now, the plans, which you all have copies of, I have large ones here, let me go right to the roof. We have these, so the three sectors are here, one pointing this way, the G.
What page are you on?
I'm sorry?
What page are you on?
C1. So the G sector, so north is this way, approximately, northeast, so here's 30th Avenue out here, this is to the east. And so the G sector's pointing down this way, the A sector's up there, the equipment, the, the other thing I forgot to mention, to make these antennas work, we have, they have to be hooked up to the radio cabinets and so forth. When it's a cell tower, that's often in a little shelter at the, at the base. And when it's in a building, oftentimes it's in the basement or somewhere. Well, they don't have any room inside or they didn't want us inside or whatever. So, and the rooftop installation's very common, just to stick it up on the roof somewhere, and you're not going to see that stuff. That's a low framework where we have these cabinets. There's a battery cabinet, a radio cabinet, a power cabinet and so forth. That's all up on the, more in the interior on the roof, and then it feeds out and services these. Then this B sector over here points to the east. Now, this B sector was the subject of the building inspector's questioning, that seemed, that appeared to be taller than the 12 feet above roof, which is what the bylaw requires. Now, we've solved that problem, okay, and I'm going to get to that in a second, but I want to show you what I did in the meantime, until we knew, we just saw this yesterday, and I apologize, I don't want to, but it's not like I'm coming in here, you know, with this complicated subdivision and laying all these changes down the last minute. All we want to do is just slide this one sector over and lower it to be in compliance. But before we knew we were going to be able to do that, because we had to get Wegmans' permission, we had to get Nord Blum's permission, which we literally got just yesterday, I had worked with Matt to produce this display to show you that, in my opinion, you know, and again, I apologize in advance, because you folks write through with the bylaw. So the bylaw limit of 12 feet, okay, you know, in the, in the bylaws, there are definitions, and if it's not a defined term, then you go to the plain English meaning. So 12 feet above the roof, is that above the flat roof or the parapet? What is the roof? You know, if you're an observer on the ground, walking the sidewalk and you look up, here's the top of the roof. You don't know whether there's a parapet or not. In my opinion, it was a visual thing. You wanted to limit it to 12 feet because you didn't want like a 50-foot thing up there, you know? Limit it to 12, okay. So we've made the change, but before we made the change, this one sticks up seven feet, this one sticks up seven feet, and this offending B sector that the building inspector keyed in on, six up, nine feet, that's the visual above the parapet. So you could make an argument that they're all compliant visually. However, we, in the meantime, were able to slide this one and lower it, because what happened behind the scenes here is seven feet above the parapet, it was 10 feet to the roof, seven feet above the parapet, 10 feet to the roof. This one, nine feet above the parapet, but 17 feet to the roof, and that was technically in violation. So I was going to try to make this argument that, hey, visually we're compliant in the spirit of the bylaw, but I, rather than put you folks in an uncomfortable position trying to, in an esoteric discussion on does that comply or not, we, in the meantime, got Wegmans to agree and Nord Blum to agree to allow us to slide this sector from here over to here and lower it. So now it'll be 12 feet, so we're in compliance, and seven feet, I believe.
Which sector is that that you moved?
That's the V sector. And so what I have here.
You're on C2, page C2.
That is, well, let me, okay, let me go back.
The beta sector.
That, that was just a display for discussion purposes. Let me go here, yes, C2. So C2, which would just slide over. Now I have here.
I have it out?
Yeah, there's one for you as well.
He's on the other, he's on the other one somehow.
It's that thing, okay.
So what I've drawn here, and, and I apologize, this is something, you know, my job, our team effort here is to brainstorm this thing, to get this thing in compliance so that we could respectfully ask for your approval. And what we would like to do then, because this is such a minor thing, all we're talking about doing is taking this thing, sliding it down here and lowering it. And then we'd ask for, we'd agree, we'd stipulate to that, and then respectfully ask for a condition, that we then have the Dewberry Company follow up with stamped drawings showing that and allow staff to administratively approve that and verify, yes, indeed, that's, they did what they said they were going to do. But the gist of what that does then, it is allows us to be in compliance. So I have back here, so what I, what I just, what you all have in front of you is what I was just showing you, and then what I have back here are the proposed change, is sort of, this is a larger version of what I just gave you. Just here is where we are now. Let me go back. Here's where we are now. And we would just want to slide it down there.
No, I think we understand that.
Yeah.
So that would be, still be the highest one, it would be 12 feet above.
Right.
Okay.
And then.
And you think that is going to give you the coverage that you're looking for? For how long?
What do you mean, how long?
Are you going to come back in two years and say we need more?
I don't know. I mean, that's where our industry's constantly evolving, we're doing this.
That's what's worrying me, yeah.
Sorry?
That's what's worrying me.
Where are you, how, Madam Chair?
What's worrying me is that this might not be enough to last for long and that you could be coming back and we might be having these sprouting up all over the place. That's what's worrying.
I, I think that's a possibility, that not, you know.
Yeah, that's not making me feel bad.
Nationwide, all the carriers, not just me.
Yes.
Are these 5G compatible?
This, you know, 5G's not out there yet, so all the equipment, all the installations we put on are, yes, going to be able to go to 5G when it's out there, of course.
So they are? Because, yeah, because that's, that's coming, too. More, more antennas are coming, small cell.
Right, exactly. And this is, this is it. This is going on, this is happening all across the country in meetings just like this. Guys like me and folks like us are all out there working on, you know, densification, adding sites here and there to fill in these problems where we're dropping calls, we're not, but as I said, it's a benefit, in our opinion, to your community, to this, to the business part, because it's infrastructure, it's wireless infrastructure that everyone's grown to rely on.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not really aware of a problem. I'm not going to argue that point with you. I've never experienced a problem there. I definitely experienced problems in other surrounding towns, never experienced a problem in Burlington. But I had a question for you regarding the visual impact of these, they look like, you know, little smokestacks or little chimney stacks. Are there other options?
So, what we've done is, uh-
There are.
Sometimes, we, if it's a church, for example, and they have a steeple, that's the correct height we want to go at, we've done installations in steeples. This one was investigated and vetoed, it's not-
Why?
I'm sorry?
We were wondering why that was vetoed.
Yeah, it's, there's not enough room in there, it's not set up for it, it's too high, it's not going to be, see, there's a problem if we get, if we, uh, this is counterintuitive, you know, 25 years ago, we wanted to be as high as possible.
Right.
Now, if you're too high, too close to a neighboring site, it overshadows and then conflicts.
So, the height of the tower is the problem?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not, it's that, and it's-
When I meant, when I said, "Are there other options?", I meant visually, are there other options?
Well-
Other than the smokestack?
Yeah, we've done chimneys, we've done-
Is there something that looks like a weather vane, or something that looks like, something other than a smokestack, which most people wouldn't consider aesthetically pleasing?
We actually asked the buildings to cover those mechanicals up like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we've done chimneys, I don't, we've done these, you know, like a fake chimney. I don't think that would be appropriate on this building. That's more for a brick building or a historic building, or something that has chimneys already anyway, you know?
Right.
This, that would not be appropriate here, but we could do that. Anything we do there would have to be, of course, run by our landowner, run by Nordblum and so forth. This, we came up with, because in our opinion, and we've done, this is what we do for a living, this is the most unobtrusive. This is something that, Madam Chair, you're going to notice it, because you obviously are keyed in on this, but general public is not even going to take note of that.
Right, but to Joe's point, when we have actual mechanicals up there, we want them not visible. And now, this is a fake mechanical that is visible, and we're just wondering if there's some other more attractive way of putting that up there.
There are ways to facade-mount that, you know, I mean, basically, it's one of these conundrums where we have to be above to broadcast out. We can't put them underground, we can't hide them too much. And so, these could be painted a different color.
What's actually inside the smokestack looking like?
So, there's a pole, so first, there's a ballast, a steel framework that holds the thing down, it's basically a counterweight that holds it down. And then, it's a pole that goes right up the middle. The antenna is bolted to that, facing the correct azimuth for its coverage. And then, that's surrounded by a fiberglass sheathing to appear to be, you know, a metal canister or a brick or whatever it is. And that material is transparent to the RF signal, so it can pass through. But inside that is an antenna. These are also the smallest we can make them, we talked about that, you know, typically, these are two feet in diameter. Typically, we would like to be three, four feet, so there's more room in there to downtilt and maneuver and work on this thing. This thing's like right in there. It's going to have to utilize what they call electric down tilt to aim down. But it's fixed in place, and it's, it's as stealth and sleek as we can make it, and, but as unobtrusive, in our opinion, as we can offer. The industry's come a long way with these stealth devices, and this is, this is as good as it gets. Now, it could be painted a different color, but this is just a flat, sort of blob gray finish, in our opinion, also to sort of blends in the most. You know, you start painting things, it stands out more, you start drawing attention to it, if you try to make it look other than just some, some vent on a restaurant roof or something.
Are there any locations from which you can see more than one of them?
On this particular building?
Any views from which?
These photos indicate no, but I don't know. I mean, you know, you can see, this was taken, so this, in the package, you have the locations of the photos. So, photo one was taken from the north, and you can see that beta sector, which is now just going to slide over to here and be a little lower. Photo two was taken, um-
Okay, I understand, we can-
Yeah, I mean-
So, as far as you know, there's not a location from which you would be able to see two of them. Let me stop you there for a couple of minutes, because I want to give my board members time to ask questions.
Sure.
Okay, does that suit everyone?
Just because I think it will come up, just based on that question and some others. We do have a condition in the special permit to have them review with, for me to review and approve their, the way they're concealing the structure before they install it, so.
Okay.
That's just a level of review.
All right. I still was hoping there was some more attractive way, you know, like a little weather vane or something like that, that people, that it wouldn't look like mechanicals, but-
And any more direction you guys want to give, that would be great.
That's fine.
And also, can I just say one thing, Madam Chair, before you go to the board? Is we've done this, and we've made these changes into being in compliance with the building inspector's letter, you know, that he wants full compliance with the bylaw. Okay, now, we are, limit the number of antennas, we're only three, we'd like to have 12. And the beta sector's P is to be higher than 12? No, we're moving it so it maxes out at 12.
I understand.
The alpha and gamma don't show their full heights above roof, it's 10 feet, and actually, hold on, it's 10? 10 feet, 10 feet, and 12 feet.
Okay.
And then, will there be any equipment on top of the cabinets? No. So, the equipment cabinet platform, it maxes out at nine feet, and the building inspector asks, "Well, you going to put more stuff on top of that?" No, we're not, that's the top of that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ernie, do you have any questions?
Um, just the, the, actually, Bill pointed out some elevation, some-
Do you want to let Bill go first?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill. Whatever. But this is, this is out of your Verizon report, and it says, "Antenna centerline height", and it gives heights of 30-
What key do you want, Ernie?
I'm on, I don't think you have this, Jack.
Okay.
They only gave us one copy of that.
Yeah, I think there was just one copy. It has heights of the antennas from 33 to 40 feet.
That's off the ground, that's above ground level, AGL, above ground.
Above ground, AGL.
What does it say, AGL?
Uh, it doesn't.
Hmm, somebody better, somebody probably should change the title on that column, because it's very confusing. So, you're saying there are only 12 feet to the buildings, only 21, 21 feet high at that site?
It's-
I've got an antenna 33.3 feet, and you said the antennas are 12 feet in height off the roof of the building.
It does say centerline.
No, no, centerline, centerline of the antenna is, are 38 feet, four inches, or 45 feet, off the ground level, the gray, now we are walking. That's how that's calculated. The reason they use that nomenclature is that's now to determine safety for members of the public walking around down on the sidewalk. That has nothing to do with the building.
Didn't you say the antennas themselves are 12 feet high? Or did I miss?
No, they, see, that report has nothing to do with the zoning bylaw requirements. That guy, when, all they're doing is analyzing, is it, what's the RF safety factor? So, they have to tell you how far off the ground you're walking around on is that antenna, and then, they go by centerline antenna, because there's all kinds of different shapes of antennas, some are tall, some are short. So, that's just the way they do that.
And they're right on the edge of the building, correct?
No, they're set back in. So, they're set in, for example-
It looks like, it looks like it's the edge, yeah.
Two feet, maybe?
No, more than that, let's see, I've got that for you.
Three feet. I don't think, I don't think, up there.
Couple of feet anyway, not much.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be.
This is the one that you moved? The one that you moved looked like it's right on the edge?
No, it's going to be in the same plane, they're about 10 feet, 10 feet inland.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can hardly read it, 10, about 10 feet set back.
Looks like it might be 10 feet.
They're not right on the edge.
There's got to be one here, that's one there, yeah, right here, here.
Oh, wait, this one?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, see that? Okay.
Yeah, 10, 10 feet.
Okay. Right now, I'm good.
Yeah, I'll pass and come back later, I'm still working through.
We'll come back to you, Bill. Mike, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What determines a need for these? Do you go around testing, or how did you find out this particular site needed a boost?
Drop calls, like that, all these sites are controlled by the network, they get reports back, and they have their monitoring, all these 24/7, like a central switching area. And so, there's two ways they determine a need. One is they just norm, they track and see drop calls, problem calls, problems downloading, and then, that on top of customer complaints. That drives, because, you know, there's a finite amount of money in the budget every year, so how does a company decide where they're going to spend it? A lot of that's driven by complaints as well. I keep, you know, dropping a call over there, and I'm going to switch to the competitor, unless you guys do something about it. You get enough of those combined with, yes, they look at the traffic, the network traffic, and realize, yeah, this is a problem. And they decide, okay, we got to do something about it here. And see, this is a high, and I don't need to tell you guys, this is a highly densely-used commercial area. There's traffic going by, there's people in there shopping, there's people on their phone, there's people driving, it's just, this is the worst kind of thing for a network, because it just shrinks that footprint down. Now, depending on what time you're day there, you may not have a problem. And that's the same when we try to get permission to build a cell tower. People will say, "I made a call out there this afternoon, and there was no call." Yeah, if there's no other traffic on the network, and you have the conditions just right, you may be just fine. But you get the high network traffic, and the footprint shrinks down, people are dropping calls, and then, when someone's trying to call 911 or something, that's when you have, you know, this is a public safety and convenience issue. This is infrastructure we're providing.
Okay, so, so that answered your question. Wait, Mike, did you have any other questions?
No, I'm good, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do you have comments from the directors?
I think there's no comments, actually. They're all, they're all set. The approval, the only was the inspector of buildings' approval with the following recommendations, full compliance with 8.4.0 of the town Burlington zoning bylaw, two, limit the amount of antennas, three, it appears that the beta antenna is more than 12 feet above the roof, four, the alpha and gamma antennas do not show their full height above the roof, five, it appears the raised platform and associated equipment slash cabinets will be nine feet above the roof line. Will there be any equipment mounted on top of the cabinets? That's their comment. The other one is, no comments.
I think we've addressed those.
Yeah, I, I also, and I think I made the one comment, which I kind of stick by, is if we had mechanicals on a roof being built like that, we'd ask them to hide them.
Well, that's what we've done. We've hidden our antennas inside this sheathing. The antenna can't be hidden and down below the parapet.
Right, but you're hiding it in something that looks like a fake mechanical.
I'm sorry?
We, we don't want mechanicals to be seen, and what you've done is you've made it look like a mechanical, instead of-
The antenna.
Instead of an antenna, and-
Take that off and just make it a bare antenna, we do that all over the place.
I think you should make it look like something else, but, okay.
Look like a sculpture of some kind?
I'm going with the weather vane.
It's a sculpture.
So, do you have any other questions?
I mean, can it be screened somehow, or?
We have 45,000 jobs in Burlington, many of them high-tech people, they're here during the day. We have to keep up. And this new technology comes in, and we have to figure out how to deal with it. And it seems to me that you've made a major effort to make it as unobtrusive as possible within the parameters it has to broadcast. So, if you get, if you're going to put something up above the parapet, then, you know, there's only a certain number of things you can do with it, you know? You could put a little worldly thing up there, or whatever. But to me, that's the commercial area of town, and it does not bother me that much to be down there, to understand that you have to do these things. I understand that.
We just agreed to put 300 more units of residential in there.
Residential, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's some residential, but those old people aren't even going to see the top of the building.
Oh, yes, they're up high, they'll see it.
It's only 42.
14% of them, yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand, and we've tried. We, we took a commercial storage facility, and by the time Joe got through with it, you wouldn't mind living across the street. We got trays, we got fences and everything else.
We've got people driving in there, they want to live there.
We're very tuned to that. But in this instance, you know, I maybe had to look up at the roof, I do, I look down.
Jack, do you have any questions?
Joe, you weren't finished, were you?
Sort of a combination of what Mike and Barbara asked you, where it's 5G.
They're kind of like-
My understanding is, because it's 5G compatible, they have a shorter range, so when you go 5G, you will be looking for a lot more of these closer together. Am I misunderstanding what, how 5G works?
No, and this is the start of that, and, but then, until that's on the air and the network is functioning, we don't know where or what or everybody or any. I mean, that's a hypothetical question that can't be answered now, because that-
Well, it's not hypothetical, because I sat on a 5G committee, and they wanted to put those things like 100 or 200 feet apart, the antennas.
Okay.
So, you should probably want several sets of them on the Wegmans roof and all the buildings around there.
No, I don't think several sets on the roof. I would think of anything, maybe another, you know, building a quarter mile down the road or something like that. I don't know that now.
You're proving these three.
You don't do, you don't do 5G permitting? You don't, you don't get involved in representing for 5G permitting?
I do, but that's, the term 5G, it's like a marketing term, it's describing something that's coming, that's being worked on, but it's not out there now with everyone, you know, ubiquitous and everything. We're, one site at a time, we're filling in the network in preparation for that, yes. So, this, this is one of those steps.
It's in some communities, though. I've seen 5G on my phone in some places.
Okay.
Does that mean it's not? No.
No, no, it is, it's on in certain places, but I'm saying, in Burlington, for example, I, you know-
Not true, not true 5G.
We're building it out, it's not nationwide yet, but this is the one step, it started as 1G, then 3G, 4G. We're building out 4G, and it's coming, but it all is going to require more sites, densification. This is a step towards that direction.
So, two per question is, yeah, once you go 5G, there's going to be more of them closer together.
Both, yes.
Possibly, I mean, this one will definitely have to be on air, I mean, we need this site now at 4G.
Okay, that's all.
Sir, you certainly seem to be well-prepared to be-
I'm sorry?
You certainly seem to be well-prepared and knowledgeable about your subject.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. My concern is, you're making, you're not act, my concerns are growing the more you talk, because if this is the start, and there's going to be three of these that look like little smokestacks on top of Wegmans, and then, in a few years from now, what are we going to have, nine, 10 of them? And you're going to want to be putting them on buildings all up and down? Don't answer me yet, because it's a rhetorical question. I'm not convinced that, A, we need it today, and I don't like the way it looks. I think there are ways you can make it look better, and actually, Joe is showing me something that's much more attractive. You can come up here and take a look at the phone, it's like a little, um-
Just the ballast, is, you know the ballast that we had them do on the top of a piano building?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just think something like that up there, around it, would screen the whole thing right up.
That way, it would screen it, you could come and look if you want, it would screen it, and then, if you did have to put more up there in the future-
Just like rooftop ballast is on it.
None of them would be visible.
So, you wouldn't be seeing anything up there with the ballast.
Where's the antennas?
Well, there is, I'm just saying, that's a common rooftop-
That's not an antenna, that's an architectural element.
Right, that's a common rooftop- Have you installed any of these anywhere that we could look at? These, exact.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know I've done, yes.
Around here?
Yes. What Joe is suggesting, and I think what I would like you to explore, is some kind of architectural element that would screen these and future ones like it from view. And I think that's, I would, I would sort of, I would like to challenge you to try and find a creative solution around this.
Well, so, this is, this is what we have done in the sense of putting it in this canister, okay? You don't like the canister?
Yes, but we're telling you that the canister looks like exactly the type of thing we try to hide. We don't, the canister looks like mechanicals, we don't want it to look like that.
Conventional chimney look more appropriate than-
No, something that would screen it, Joe, like Joe showed you, some sort of architectural element on the building that would screen these from view.
I would recommend that we approve, that if we were to approve, that the concealment be reviewed and approved by the planning director in consultation with the chair and vice chair.
I'm not inclined to approve it tonight.
No, I know, I'm just saying, if we were to, I would like input further.
I think, and I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, I think that you can do better.
I would, I would like to ask him if there is a location that he can go to, that they've already done this to look at.
That's a good question.
Can you, through the, through the planning department, can you just supply some locations?
Yeah, I can't think of it off the top of my head, yes.
Yeah, you don't have to do it now, but it will definitely help.
I know that Dugger Company puts out this annual calendar every year, and they have all these great examples of stealth they've done all over the country that...
Give us a copy of the calendar, that'd be great.
We'd like to see some of those, too, maybe there's something that we would find more attractive.
If they're stealth enough, you'll be able to see them. Let me just throw out some examples there.
You're all set, okay. I think actually, if, I think...
I can comment on things.
Oh, okay, sorry, I misunderstood you. Bill has some questions, go ahead.
If you're all set.
I am.
So I, yeah, I would agree with the chair and member and Pember, so when I looked at this the first time, I was, what came to mind was, you know, we're electing a pope and we're gonna see the white smoke come out of these things. So you have kind of the three conclaves happening at Wegmans', I'm not kinda kidding, that's kinda what I saw that, it's a mechanical that came to my mind.
Good Catholic boy, Bill.
Right, thank you. So I think I'd be, I'd be very interested in something like Joe seeing that we can kinda push this a little bit to make this, make it look, hide it and make it not look like a mechanical. And I'm sure this stuff I'll...
Bless you.
My other, my other question here is on the report, the Verizon report, and we talked, Ernie brought to our attention, the antenna centerline height is in his 30s, and that's from someone standing on the outside, let's say, of the sidewalk, is that correct?
Yeah.
So if this, this store has a second floor, so we're talking kind of major attenuation from the antenna down through the building materials because it's not kind of an hour inch transparent type of material, so, you know, you have a blocking with the ceiling, so you're not talking kind of a 40 foot, you're talking probably a couple of foot to people in the building, so it's not supposed to be covered in the building or...
It's broadcasting out.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how does, how does, how does the coverage get into the building then? If you get a cellphone in the building?
Coming from another site, I mean, that's what can be a problem, you know, in stadiums and big buildings, like we have antennas in Mass General Hospital, we have antennas in stadiums and so forth, but it's, it's coming in from outside somewhere.
It's coming in from outside, but it won't come in from outside from the antenna sitting on the, on the top, is that correct?
I guess, you know, I guess some could, I, I mean, I'd have to...
So that's why I'm kinda saying, you're talking, your antenna centerline is figured to be 33 feet, so that's a person on the ground, but you've got people on the second floor of this thing sitting around, we've got lounge areas actually in Wegmans' there, so if you've got calculations of kind of an attenuation of the antenna right on the top of the building, what's the attenuation going through the materials, through the roof, to people that are sitting there, probably...
10 feet.
10 feet, 8 feet, right below the antenna?
I can get that, if we're coming back, I can get that.
That'd be great, thank you.
If I could ask Bill's question another way, you're 120 degrees wide, how many degrees high?
No, they just, they shoot straight to the horizon, they're...
120 degrees wide, you're saying?
No, 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 the, yeah.
120, so that's wide, how many degrees tall?
I don't know.
My, my problem with talking about the mechanicals, the purpose of blocking the mechanicals is so you can't see them. This purpose is not to be blocked, but to be, I mean, those antennas have to be able to broadcast, so you have to have them above whatever you put there.
They could be in a fiberglass building.
Think of it.
Because this is, this shield now is fiberglass, so they could be in...
I'd rather see the antenna than fiberglass up there.
You can block them with something that's signal transparent.
That's all I thought you were showing me.
Yeah, just the ballast, the ballast that they have.
Something like that, like into the roof.
Where it is, so that on the roof, it's like a natural...
It looks like an architectural element that these things could have.
So you wanna have something that's architecturally...
Yes.
In concert with the building.
Exactly.
That goes around the antenna, and the antenna...
Or around the whole outside of the building.
The problem with this thing here, Joe, is that you don't broadcast out of there.
If it's signal transparent, it will.
But if it's all the way around the building, too, then when they add more in the future, they'd all be hidden behind there.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I don't think, did you have more questions, though?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I think...
I don't accept a directive suggestion.
Well, I don't know what the will of the board is, I personally would like to see what they can come up with that would, A, look more attractive, and B, alleviate our concerns about multitudes of these things in the future, in this location, or in other locations, because this is, this is also the first like this, and we're setting a precedent, and other people are gonna, you're gonna come, you or someone else is gonna come to us with different sites where they wanna do this, and we wanna make this one look really great so that when other people come to us, we're gonna say, you're gonna have to make it look as pretty as it does at Wegmans'. So that's what I'm looking for. I don't know if the rest of the board is...
So let me, along that line, let me ask you a question, just generally, there is another way to mount antennas, which Wegmans' did not, Wegmans' did not want them, they call facade mount, where they're, they're mounted on the side of the building, I'm sure you've all seen this, and then they're painted to cover, painted the same color as their background surface. Is that something that you would find acceptable?
I don't know what that looks like, I would have to see what it would look like.
You know, the antenna's exposed now, so there it is, but it's painted if it's, if it's this sort of red and brown.
Stealth? Camouflaged?
I would have to see.
It's like camouflage?
Yeah.
Camouflage?
So if it's mounted on a white building, it's painted white, if it's mounted on a gray building, it's painted...
It's camouflage, that's what we did in the army.
I don't know, I think it would depend on what it looks like.
But it's open, but it's out, it's open and exposed, it's not hidden.
Right, I can't answer that question because I don't know what it would look like, but you could probably show us pictures.
What was Wegmans' objection to something like that?
I think theirs was aesthetics, they thought that's more visible, just hide it up in this canister.
Yeah, it might be more visible, I think we'd have to see pictures, you could show us examples, I'm sure.
Yes, I agree.
But I think we should, I personally think we should continue this, I don't know if the rest of the board agrees, and if, if we continue it, I would suggest that you meet with staff, and staff can consult with members of the board so that we can come up with alternatives. I do think that this is an important first that we're doing here, and we wanna make sure that we're doing it correctly, that we're making it as, as attractive as it possibly can be as a example for others that are gonna come, because from what you're telling me, there's gonna be a lot of these coming.
If you want members to meet with staff, you should appoint a subcommittee?
Well, could we first have a continuous to the next meeting about October 3rd?
Yes, that's what we were, yes, that's what I'm suggesting, yes.
So that, and then in the meantime, we will get with our team and get some examples and so forth, and provide and resource some different ideas. But I also would like to, if I could, just poll the board, I know Madam Chair, this offends you for whatever reason, is the board, the whole board...
It doesn't offend me, it worries me, but I think Ernie had a question before.
I have another question, you have, other than the three antennas, you have some equipment cabinets on the top of the roof, right?
Yeah, that is hidden.
And how high, how high are those? Are they hidden or...
Nine feet, but they're interior, they're way over here, so those you're not gonna see, so that's, to your point, that's mechanical equipment that's hidden behind the parapet, you're not gonna see that.
Okay.
But these antennas have to be, you know, if you're in the...
No, we understand why they have to stick up.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I think if you gave us some locations that you have done this exact thing, and they were close enough that we could look at it, we'd have a better feel for it. I know Barbara doesn't particularly like to call them, but I don't know what it's gonna look like, I can't picture it in my head, so...
It would be nice to see examples, you're right. So do we want to have a subcommittee?
If you want members to meet with staff, in order to avoid violating the open meeting law, you have to appoint them as a subcommittee.
That's why I'm asking if anyone wants to be a part of a subcommittee.
To get information coming next meeting, I'm happy to, you know, just look at next meeting.
Okay, that's fine with me as well.
Anything way ahead of time in the meeting, always helpful.
Yes, staff can always present what they are receiving to us ahead of time, so we have time to review it.
So you're suggesting you not bring the stuff at the next meeting, but get it to staff well ahead of time?
Yes, yes, that would be great.
And so if we can't find locations, you know, close by, how about some photos of other...
That would be great, yes, yes, and you can give us the locations as well, because then we can actually go through and look at them ourselves on Google Earth, too.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, is it the consensus of the entire board, then, that this is offensive? Because I'm shocked, I thought we did a good job.
I don't think I said offensive.
I don't know if it is, in my opinion, because I can't really...
It doesn't offend me, but I think Madam Chair's point is well-taken, that this is something that's on the horizon, no pun intended for us, I mean, we should probably do this one right if we're gonna go forward, and if there is a, you know, a better way to conceal them, I don't see the harm in that.
Did you say this was on the horizon, Mike?
Horizon.
I don't find it offensive, but I don't think it's the best we can do. I think we can do better.
I'm frequently not in concert with the board, but, you know, this looked as good as you could do, I mean, you need the antennas, and, you know, you gotta go to mass call if you're out or some way, really.
Yeah, maybe they've got something for it to propose to us.
What the hell can you do with a little antenna?
Okay, so...
May I continue to the meeting of October 3rd?
2nd.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obsteing? Okay, so we have 6...
01.
01, no, 610, and we're gonna continue to October 3rd.
I'm opposed, but it doesn't...
Thank you, and we'll be in touch with our staff, and we'll try to give you feedback as well.
Who voted, no?
Paul voted no.
I voted no, but Barbara made it abstaining, and that's fine.
No, 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 I changed it, it is 610.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we did D, so now we have meeting minutes, I know Liz passed meeting minutes out to us earlier this week, has everyone had a chance to review them?
I have. I had one slight numerical change, scriven as error.
I don't have the actual dates here, but if we want to, we could vote on them now, if you don't, I think, I know we're behind, so if we can't get to them...
Like March 15th, April 4th, or something like that.
Yeah, March and April.
There you go.
I'll find the email, I will...
Can we just do a motion to approve the minutes Liz sent to us last week?
You're gonna have to separate them, because I was not there for one.
Okay, yes, I got your email, Bill, thank you.
The March one, I was there for the April one, I was not.
I've got them right here, hold on.
Oh, you got those?
They are the meeting minutes for, okay.
What day was it?
Coming up. All right, these, the first ones are for meeting minutes for March 21st, 2019.
Is that the one you weren't here for?
Yeah, March I was here for.
Motion to approve the minutes of March 20...
1st, 2019.
2019.
2nd.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. So we have two abstentions?
5-0.
And five approves, yes?
Yes.
Okay. 5-0-2. The other ones are for April 4th, 2019.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 4th, 2019.
2nd.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's three ayes, opposed?
Abstained.
And abstained, how many abstains? One, two, three abstains.
4-3.
4-3, okay.
Majority.
Or 0-3. I sent them out on Tuesday, Joe.
Yep.
Okay, so we did minutes, subcommittee, do we have an update from the Airbnb subcommittee?
We do not.
I didn't think so, okay, it hasn't been very long, so, we already talked about the online permitting software, does anybody else have any other business?
I have a question on the online permitting, permitting software, I'm not sure if staff can answer it, but...
Yes, it is awesome. The best. Not confusing at all.
That overshadows what I, very good. Can I, can I go online in the building departments, online permitting software, and find out if somebody has pulled a permit for the addition they're doing on Wind Street?
Yes, you can, that's all public information, and it's all available online.
I didn't seem to be able to get there, so maybe, maybe I didn't try out enough.
Talk to me about it offline, and we'll...
Liz, we'll send you the link.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, but you should be able to...
Actually, it's all, it's on our website.
Yeah, the link is there, I got the link, but, okay, thank you, Madam Chairman, I'm all set.
Bill, did you have something?
Sure, two nuggets of the week, one, actually, member Espo had mentioned the feather sign downtown for the nail salon, they actually moved it off the sidewalk, which is good, I saw it today, and they now have it on, off the sidewalk. So I think, my, my particular opinion is they probably think that's okay, because across the street you've got the Dunkin' Donuts, it's been there for quite a long period of time, so if the Dunkin' Donuts is okay to have a feather sign, why not put one across the street? So that's kind of on the feather side, feather sign, and then there's another sign at the drive-in which gets rotated occasionally, that's kind of stapled there, and I think if we can talk to the Dunkin' Donuts guys, you know, maybe they can help them out, and then it's easy to work with them.
So the Dunkin' Donuts and the nail salon across the street from Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah, so the Dunkin's has that, plus they have the sign that's on the...
And this is town...
On the post as you go through the drive-through, it's some zip ties, and it's right on the post there, that these people get into posting them on the post, you know, there's a lot of them around town, so I figure Dunkin' Donuts is kind of a flagship company, and if you can, you can help them to get there, then...
They're coming in for a rehab in a couple of years, too.
Yeah, so, so we'd have to, we'd have to...
We don't need to wait a couple of years.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, yes.
So my, my other nugget of the week is, I found it unusual, just the other day I was driving down Lower Meadowvale, if you know, if you're coming off of Bedford Street and you take a right on Meadowville, so the flat part of Meadowville before you go up, and there was one house that had curbing put in front of it by...
Granite curbing?
Not granite curbing, just a kind of...
Cobblestones, maybe?
The tomahawk. The tomahawk.
By two minutes curbing, but it was only in front of one house, and I'm like, that is the weirdest thing I've ever seen, so they had by two minutes curbing right in front of the one house on the left with orange cones in front of it, and I kinda looked up the street, and I kinda looked down the street, and there was no other house that had the curbing put on it, and I'm like, well, could they do it privately?
I think if, I know in, not the house I'm living in now, but the house I've lived in before, my neighbor wanted to put a better curbing in than was there, and they did let him do it, I think he actually put cobblestones, mortared together, this guy might have had a lawn that was flooding and said, hold on, just...
You pull a street, you would pull a street opening camera.
It's a low point, they may be looking to divert water, or if there's a storm drain there, they may be trying to channel it.
No. Didn't look like that. But I mean, maybe you can just check on that, because it was unusual, where there's no other curbing along the street, just in front of that house.
Yeah, I wondered, I said, they must know somebody in DPW.
What, do we have an address?
They might have done it themselves.
See if they can get the address.
That slants right off into the wetlands, and I expect that's why they did it, because the water comes down, it, there's a downgrade, and on the left, there was no barrier there, so it just flows across and down behind there.
I hope no turtles or snakes are trying to get across.
Well, that's, I mean, it's just unusual, why you would have that one house.
It's slanted.
Well, I mean, it's all, it's all the houses along, it would be similar for every house along the way, so it's just, let me see if I can find out what, just tell you which one, you know, kind of...
Is this something for the DPW to handle or something?
Yeah, it's a question for them more than us, I would say, so if you wanna call them, you can ask Ray.
Well, they won't do anything, I guess.
That would be the conservation commission.
Because they might, they might have done it, you know.
It's residential.
Yeah, so...
Barbara, I have one other thing, somebody approached me last night, I went to the thing at the Huntington, because somebody said free wine and cheese, and...
Right.
Anyways, I went to, and somebody approached me and said, you know, I was at the senior center the other night, and we were using, her and a friend were there, they were using Uber, and the Uber driver couldn't find the place, because, as she pointed out, there really is no sign facing the street, and she thought that maybe there should be one, and I don't know if it's, we can incorporate, there's no way out, it proves the side plane. There should be, there is no sign that identifies the address of the building as 61 Center Street, except if you go down to the entrance there.
Right, yeah.
That's kinda tucked in.
You can have a freestanding sign that has the address.
You can.
Yes.
So the Board of Selectmen might be the one to talk to about that.
And there's municipal category of freestanding signs as well.
Now, who does that? Is that a building, is that John Sanz's office?
I've been to Board of Selectmen.
Yes, facilities.
For your facilities, right?
I would suggest you bring that up with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have, oh, sorry.
That was the third house on the left on...
I just have one to ask.
I have one, Madam Chair, maybe for now the meeting, and I don't think I'd ever use it, but are we as the board gonna discuss the new policy on remote, remote attendance on meetings?
That's an excellent topic for the next meeting, I'm not prepared to...
The answer is yes.
Not tonight, yeah, just yours.
No, no, that's, thank you, thank you.
Because we should figure out how we wanna handle that. Kristen, what did you have?
Oh, just wanted to let everyone know, the Conservation Commission approved the sidewalk of the Burlington Mall Road sidewalk.
Great.
That Simon will be constructing, and it was approved with the plan in front of us to move the guardrail in the back, but to add 20 red maple trees along the bottom of the slope between the wetland.
Great.
So that is underway. We have a pre-construction meeting next week, and hopefully we'll get it in the ground.
That's really good news.
Congratulations on that.
That's really good news, thank you.
Approved.
Lot of good news to make.
All right.
I'd like a few minutes.
No, you can have one. No, I'm teasing you, Jack. Go ahead. A few minutes. What do you need a few minutes for?
This is purely a personal statement, to reflect, the character and veracity of the Burlington Planning Board has been maligned without substantiation in a lawsuit filed in the land court. Then after the lawyers had already scheduled settlement discussions, the same party who filed the lawsuit sent an email to town meeting members repeating some of those unsubstantiated allegations. Unfortunately, those falsehoods had been magnified on social media by some people who should know better. Yet those people chose to jump to unwarranted conclusions without getting the truth and without waiting for verification without actual facts in court, which is the only place where people would be under oath. Regrettably, the planning board has been unilaterally denied the opportunity to defend itself in court, denied by the Board of Selectmen and the administration, which has exclusive control over the town's legal budget. I must ask why some people are afraid to have the real facts brought forward in court under oath and let the court rule on those facts and rule on the law. Instead, an automobile dealer with the assistance of the Selectmen Administration gets to spin the facts and control the dialogue. Again, I ask, why are some people afraid to have the real facts disclosed under oath and let an unbiased judge render a decision from the court? Although there are many aspects of this matter that would be important for good and fair people to know, I would like to point out just one aspect of this controversy that is not known by most people, and as a result, some people are unwittingly recruited to repeat the unsubstantiated allegations against the planning board. Back in 2004, the current location of the present Porsche Audi dealership was not zoned to allow an automobile dealership, but was grandfathered for operation, grandfathered for the operation of the CN Wood Company, which sold backhoes, bulldozers, and similar construction equipment. By some creative stretch of the imagination, an application for a car dealership was submitted on the theory that the passenger car dealership was like a construction equipment dealer and not substantially more detrimental than the company that sold backhoes and bulldozers. A majority of the planning board back then believed that traffic generated by a traditional automobile dealership was too much for that location. The proponent of the dealership then promised they would sell only luxury vehicles, which would generate significantly less traffic than a traditional dealership. Based upon that promise by the dealership, the planning board at that time narrowly approved a luxury car dealership by a four to three vote. Traffic and safety was a planning board concern back then, just as the present planning board considers traffic and safety to be an important consideration and a deciding factor in the recent planning board decision for the controversial auto dealership. Information such as that has not been disclosed to the town meeting members, yet that dealership now complains they are not being treated like other dealerships, even though they promised they would be a different type of dealership and operate in a way that produced substantially less traffic. By withholding such information and spreading other misleading information, the complaining dealership has caused people to unfairly form negative opinions of the planning board, a board that tried to carefully follow the time, town bylaws, and hold the dealership to the promise they made in 2004, as well as hold them to the zoning bylaw the dealership wrote for itself in 2018. In my opinion, and speaking only for myself, I see such action by the Selectmen and the administration as having a very chilling and damaging effect on the planning board's ability to fulfill its statutory obligation to the Burlington residents. Many of those residents view increased traffic congestion and the related safety impacts as a significant problem in town, and the planning board, when the law allows, tries to apply those concerns on behalf of the Burlington residents. Now, after all the rumors and unsubstantiated allegations of the past two months, if an applicant appearing before the planning board does not like the planning board's decision to address the traffic and safety concerns, the applicant need only file a lawsuit with the knowledge of the Selectmen, and the administration will deny the planning board the opportunity to defend itself in court against unwarranted and unsubstantiated allegations. If the Board of Selectmen and the administration want to control these types of approvals in town, they should ask town meeting to initiate a change to the town's charter to place the site plan and special permit granting authority with the Board of Selectmen. Instead, we have some Selectmen playing Monday morning quarterback and marginalizing the planning board without the Selectmen having to make the difficult decisions the planning board makes with regularity. And the planning board does that after careful consideration with the help of knowledgeable professionals. This board always asks other town boards and departments to submit comments to the planning board during the public hearing process. Yet the planning board very seldom gets, gets comments from the Selectmen. Instead, they prefer to criticize the planning board afterwards. Although the Selectmen Administration cannot stop this board from speaking out and fighting back by making the truth and facts, making known the truth and facts, this board seems ready to let the unsubstantiated allegations go unchallenged, leaving some people to erroneously believe those unsubstantiated allegations are true. I cannot in good conscience be part of this deliberate marginalization, diminishment, and undermining of one of the most professional and hottest working departments in town. Consequently, after more than 40 years of holding elected office as either a town meeting member or a 17-year member of the planning board, I have decided this is my last planning board meeting. I will sit to town clerk my letter of resignation from the planning board effective tomorrow.
Sorry to hear that, Jack.
Well, I would ask that you reconsider that.
I would second Joe's request. Jack, I understand...
It's, it's frustrating, Jack.
Yep.
You're a phenomenal member of this board, and you're, and you're a workhorse, and you add so much professionalism and background to this board. I think it's, it would be an absolute shame for you to, to be frustrated off of the board.
I've made my decision.
Well, I, I...
And if I may just add, Jack, I understand your frustration, and I know that you're frustrated, because I also think that you feel that this board has not fought back vigorously enough to defend itself. And I understand why you feel that way. I, I think most of the members believe that while there has been a, an effort by a very vocal minority to disparage this board, I do think it is a minority, and I think that the majority of town meeting members and the majority of residents of Burlington appreciate the work that we do, and specifically, I think they appreciate the work that you do. And I think that they will be very disappointed if you do leave.
Well, I wouldn't be on the board if it wasn't for Jack, because I retired on 1990 in, on April 1st, and Jack found out about it. And there was somebody who he thought probably would not run again. And so he said, we need somebody going on the planning board, come on. And I said, no, Jack, I'm retiring, so forth. So Jack was persistent enough, and I felt that if I could do nothing more than support what Jack was doing, I, I would come on the board and do that. So I'm saying to Jack, give it a week, okay?
I'd do it a couple of weeks.
I know you have, and, and I feel it. I mean, as you know, I'm around town all the time. I'm in Dunkin' Donuts more than anybody else, probably, in the cleaners and everywhere else. And I got a ration of you-know-what about this thing after the letter went out from Herb Chambers to town meeting members. I get calls, what are you people doing? And when I went to land use, I mean, they, I thought they were gonna, you know, throw me out of the meeting. They, you know, they were really very aggressive about it.
Very.
And, and I defended myself as Jack has asked. I said, we make our decisions, and, you know, we do it, we do it to the best of our ability, and that's what, that's what we're elected to do.
You know what the shame is? I hear two members who have been on this board for how long, and done as much as you've done for this board, and you have to even use a half a breath to say, we have to defend ourselves? Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
Our actions speak for themselves. I, I wasn't even gonna address this, but I feel like you shouldn't accept as a letter of resignation. I think that's, I, I, I get it. I get your frustration. I'm frustrated. The bottom line is, we just need to keep on doing our jobs and, and, and forget about, you know, the, the criticism that's coming from the peanut gallery. That's as far as I'm concerned. And I get it. I, I know, we, you know, we, it's, they're undermining our ability to do our job, but I, I feel like we should have that much more conviction to just continue doing our jobs and doing it the right way. And, you know, the board will, will shine as the board, you know, as the board that's respected. And I think that's, this board is respected. And I, I don't, I don't base it on my opinion. I base it on when I walk around town and I hear people say, this is, you've done a phenomenal job here, and you guys have done a great job here and a great job there. But you know what? Those are the people that, that matter. The residents of the town are the people that matter to me. I'm doing it for the town and the people who live in this town, and the people who put us in office. And that's, those are the ones that we need to be accountable to.
I think it was very unprofessional and extremely profit-oriented that the, that Herb Chambers sent out that letter in the middle of litigation and trying to come to an agreement. And I, like Paul, was also convinced by Jack, believe it or not. I was convinced by Jack to join the planning board back in the late 80s, and Jack and I definitely don't always agree, but I believe in my heart that Jack is doing what he feels is best for the community.
Absolutely.
And that's all I would expect of any elected official. And I really don't know where the Selectmen are coming from sometimes.
You know, one, one thing I just really, one point I would like to get across in relation to this whole thing, we sat down for negotiations. One of the first questions I asked the attorneys on, on, on the Herb Chambers side was, do you realize the high percentage of people coming out of that lot, out of that business, that immediately take an illegal U-turn to get back up on the highway? Because virtually everybody coming to that place is coming from the highway. And, and the attorney looked at me and said, no, I didn't realize that. Now, here they are, fighting, you know, us, and I said, well, we brought that up during the meeting. How would you just discard that important fact, that a huge percentage of people coming out of there are taking illegal U-turns? So the more traffic we add, the more illegal U-turns that are gonna be taken in that intersection. I thought it, it just blew me away that such an important fact was disregarded, and they didn't care that